I will start with reading the agenda. At 7:00 we have community input. At 7:05, the local emergency planning committee update. 7:20 commendations for police officers Mack and Taylor. At 7:30, a joint meeting with the finance committee. At 8:30, finalizing our input to the open space and recreation plan. At 8:45, the town administrator's appoint. At 8:55, the appointment of Kim Kane. I assume we'll take that out of order and do it earlier while Kim is still with us. But Kim Kane, Carlyle representative to the Minuteman Neshoba Health Group. At 9 o'clock, we'll have liaison reports and at 9:10 adjournment. So if there's anybody here for community input, if you would please raise your hand, if you know how to do it, you can go to where it says participants at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And at the bottom of that whole list of participants, there's a little button that says raise hand. And that should bring you to the front screen, if we have more than one screen, so that I can see you and recognize you. And seeing none. We'll wait, I'd like to wait until 7:05, Chief, if that's okay with you, in case there are any other people that come late and give Barney. Barney, sorry, didn't see you before. Okay, you are muted. Okay. And waiting to see if anybody else wants to do any public community input. Okay. We're a couple of minutes early, but I'm going to go ahead and recognize Chief Fisher to give us the LEPC update.
Thanks a million, Kate. Hello. So I think the, to just give kind of the 10,000-foot view of the LEPC update right now, most members of the LEPC are kind of focused on our midterm. So whether we're working on planning last night's caucus or other large public meetings, the vote, the town meeting in Carlyle. And that's kind of how to look at where we are right now. Specifically, we still do have some new cases in Carlyle, unfortunately. But our cases do remain low. But that brings me to our other midterm task that I would like to talk to all of you about tonight. And you might have seen my memorandum that I sent to the selectmen. And it really is specific to the LEPC's work with Tim and other members of other folks that work in Town Hall, about the reopening of Town Hall and about increasing face-to-face work at Town Hall. So I sent out, I hope everybody has, working draft documents. I sent out four things. First, a cover letter to the Board of Selectmen, asking all of you to consider a couple of things. The first is that, number one, you consider allowing us to reopen Town Hall on a limited basis beginning June 1st. The second major piece of that is, one of the things we're going to need to do is to keep folks safe, both residents safe that want to come in and use the services in Town Hall as well as the employees. And one of the things we're hoping to be able to do is hire someone that, we've called the gatekeeper, but yesterday during an LEPC meeting, I was asked to soften that language up and maybe it was called a receptionist. You know, I tend to gravitate to the cop language and probably shouldn't. A letter, so a receptionist is probably a better way of saying it. But that person, I would ask that the Board of Selectmen considering allowing Tim to hire someone to work 19 hours a week to take care of the basically four hours each day, Monday through Thursday, the Town Hall, the access and potentially a few other hours Friday or other times. But in brief, that person would be in charge of ensuring that people that are coming in have an appointment, that they've, they have whatever protective gear they need to see someone and that they in fact need to be there. So we're going to try to limit drop-in. So there's still going to be people that need to drop in. There's going to be people that need to come in and see Kim in finance and the financial officers, people that do drop in to see Peggy at Town Clerks. And there's some of our residents frankly that, you know, are not going to make an appointment either online or via phone. And we'll need to make that in person. So in other words, that person will be a helper to make sure that our Town Hall work is safe. So that's the cover letter I sent to all of you. The other two documents were, one was for the employees about what they need to do and what we hope to do to keep them safe. And the other is a working document for our residents, so they understand what the plan is going forward. We've already had some updates to these. So Joan added some thoughts about the, about how she would like the council on aging to be considered on these documents. So again, these are just working documents and it was a first draft. And a bunch of people caught things that they would like better for the second round. The last document is a list basically of eight questions that are frequently used. These were, well, I'll put them on the spot. Our friend Alan Lewis saw these for a very high-profile university and it looked well-vetted and safe. And we tweaked them for use here in Carlyle. So those are the four documents I sent. And two requests I have for the Board of Selectmen. Number one, potentially enabling an opening, a soft opening, if you will, Town Hall beginning June 1st. And the second, the ability to hire someone for 19 hours to help keep everybody safe in Town Hall. So from the LEPC side, that's kind of what I hope to present tonight, because nothing else is going on that was, well, everybody's had, has really important work they're doing during this time. I think that this best summarizes what stage we're at right now.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the LEPC would like to add anything to Chief's presentation?
Laurie's here, I'll put her on the spot. Would I forget Laurie? You never miss a meeting.
I was kind of, Laurie, you're muted though. I was kind of looking at her on my screen too.
No, I think it's good that we have a week in between for the Board of Selectmen to review these documents. I think they're thorough, but they can always use a second set of eyes or several other sets of eyes to look at them. So they're ready to go out to the public. But I think they've been thoughtfully put together.
Board of Selectmen, do you have questions, comments, concerns for LEPC?
They were doing a great job.
Yes, I agree. And I want to thank the LEPC yet again for all the time, then the consideration and care and careful care in crafting all these procedures. So I think what they need from us tonight is a motion to reopen, do the opening on June 1st, because we have, our sign currently says 18th of May. And so we do need to change our sign yet again. But, so we need a motion from us to do that and to support the promulgation of these documents so that everybody then is well-informed.
I would move that, go ahead.
I just want to say, so we're certain that the state is going to be allowing us to open it in this timeframe?
I believe that Monday, yesterday, was yesterday Monday? Yeah. At 1 o'clock, the governor introduced, you know, openings. But this is, I think we could have been open this entire time actually because of the function that the Town Hall is serving. So, but we, you know, in abundance of caution, I think we're going a little more slowly.
Town Hall was designated as an essential service, so it was always eligible to be open. And I would move that we reestablish an opening date for Town Hall to be June 1st, 2020.
Second. Okay, so that's Alan Lewis with the motion.
Yeah, sorry.
Barney Arnold seconded. Is there any discussion, Barney?
Just a quick question. So I know we'll have to make a separate motion, but I just want to ask about the hiring of somebody for the 19 hours per week.
I want to talk about that separately, yeah.
Okay.
Let's do this.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, if you don't mind, let's do this first. So any further discussion on this motion? All right, so roll call.
Arnold, I.
Askalilawite.
Brown, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Good, so we will try to roll out our opening for the June 1st with these documents. Thank you.
We can get the sign changed in the rotary.
Get the sign changed in the rotary, okay? Yes, the bouncer, gatekeeper, receptionist. Do we, you know, my question is, we have people working from home. Are they working full-time from home? Could they rotate in rather than having another, you know, kind of dedicated employee for that position?
Well, I think we, this needs to be somebody who is specially trained to know what the criteria for entry are, who can be there during the window that the Town Hall is going to be open for public access. And it's something which is probably reimbursable from the Money for the Cares Act, because it is directly related to the COVID pandemic. And so I think it's somebody, I don't think we want to take people out of their regular jobs to sitting at the front door for four hours a day, four days a week. We should be able to find someone who could do that. And it needn't be an overly expensive operation, but it's certainly something that is necessary for the safety of both the employees and the public trying to gain entry to the Town Hall.
I think it's important that we make that case and that we don't just run out and hire.
Yep.
And that was my comment, question was about being sure that we, or at least being reasonably confident that we could be reimbursed for this through the Cares Act as a COVID-related expense. So.
Yeah, especially, we have frozen all positions for this year. Otherwise, you know, I'm trying to be very careful.
Can I, I just have the Cares Act, have it in front of me. And it does have temporary staff to backfill sick quarantines of employees or also including city town management, janitorial, trash, other. So I think you could probably get it in there as a temporary staff. Not guaranteed, but.
No, no. That's.
Compliance reporting, yeah.
It's not something we would normally have, it definitely is.
No, it would be temporary, it's not.
Right.
So I believe we should probably have a motion around this as well, so that we can get it right, Tim, I mean.
I would move that we authorize the town administrator to contract for a person to man the entry to the Town Hall during the emergency to provide for the safety of the employees and the public entering Town Hall.
Second.
Okay, so that was moved by Alan and seconded by Luke. Is there any further discussion? We'll have a roll call vote.
Arnold, I.
Askalilawite.
Brown, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Okay.
Just kind of parenthetically, I don't know who, you know, who might be waiting in the wings for this, but there are a number of college students that are home for the summer that are looking for work. And it's hard to find a summer job, obviously, so if we want to sort of reach into that audience at all.
Okay, well, I think we certainly want to, I think it would be nice. Well, actually, do we want to talk about a policy for this? Now, we have 20% unemployment in town right now. Do we want to and can we give preference to town residents?
I think we can leave it in the hands of the town administrator to make a responsible choice.
I think I must have misunderstood what Alan was saying at the beginning. I thought that this was somebody that needed to have special training.
Well, there is a protocol that the person has to be familiar with on what is allowable and what isn't allowable to be, to gain entry to the Town Hall. So there's that kind of training. It's not like they have to go to school for a month. It's just being aware of what the rules and regulations are.
And rather than train a whole bunch of people, I think having one person who's been trained in the protocol makes sense.
Right, we might want to, just in case one person can't make it someday, but.
The only thing I was wondering.
Your argument was just fewer people trained, not that they had to come already trained.
No, no, no.
I get it, okay.
Do you think the person that is hired needs to, you know, is it beyond August?
Ken Sabby.
I don't think we know that. I don't think we know that, but I would be a little surprised if that person was finished by then.
Yeah, that might be the issue with a college student.
I think we leave it up to Kim.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for LEPC? So LEPC, we are opening on June 1st. And Tim, we will have a receptionist in place by that date.
I like the term bouncer better.
I liked it. Okay. But it's not a police term, that's why the chief didn't want to use it.
That's right, gatekeeper.
Well, it's 7:18, I think we can move on to our commendations for police officers Mack and Taylor. I've written, well, I haven't written. But there is a letter that the Board of, that I would like to send to police officers Mack and Taylor. Basically, they're the same letter to both. And I'd like to read it and get a vote of approval for you, from you, for me to send these letters. Dear Sergeant Mack and Patrolman Taylor, the Board of Selectmen wishes to commend you for your recent life-saving actions on an emergency call in April of 2020, when you responded to a reported call for a man in severe distress. You rescued him from a precarious position and then performed life-saving care. Both your immediate actions and critical care were instrumental in saving his life. The Board wishes to take this opportunity to thank you publicly for these actions. You bring great credit to yourself and to the Carlyle Police Department through your actions. Again, the Board wishes to express its gratitude to you and hope for great success in your law enforcement careers.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So I'd like to have support of the Board to sign this letter on behalf of the selectmen and put copies of these in their files.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the signing and sending of the letters of commendation.
Second.
All right, that was Barney that made the motion and Alan that seconded. I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Arnold, I.
Askalilawite.
Louis, I.
Sorry, Brown, I, that's why you didn't hear my second, I was muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Reed, I. Okay, so on the behalf of the Board, Chief, I hope you will convey our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the fine actions of these two gentlemen.
It would be my honor.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. At 7:30, we're to meet with the FinCom. And I see a lot of them here, but if they wouldn't mind, I'd like to just quickly do a couple of very short items. And one is to finalize our input to the open space plan, because I do see, I thought I saw David Friedman. I sent around the proposed edits. Did anybody have a chance to read them? And were there any comments on them? If not, I will send them on to Mr. Friedman.
They all look good to me.
I read them and they look fine.
Okay. So we can, I will send those to Mr. Friedman. Thank you. Then there's the appointment of Kim Kane to the Carlyle as the Carlyle representative to Minuteman Neshoba Health Group. Tim, did you want to explain that or?
Sure, the town treasurer actually historically has been a representative to the health consortium that we're part of, Larry was many years ago. And Terry Colburn Dionne actually was the chairman of the organization for a few years. I think that was the last time we did an appointment, when Terry was here. So we need to update the appointment to that board so that, you know, Kim is official, more or less, in representing the town's interests with the health consortium.
Are these appointments time-limited or are they just kind of until lifetime or?
I think it's until a successor is qualified. So as long as Kim is here, she would be our representative.
Okay.
Which I hope is a very long time.
So can I have a motion, please?
Official name, I move that we appoint Kim Kane as Carlyle's representative to the, is it Minuteman Neshoba?
Health Group.
Health Group.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Barney.
Oh Barney, sorry, thank you. So Alan made the motion, Barney seconded. Any further discussion, roll call?
Arnold, I.
Askalilawite.
Brown, I.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Looking for somebody else. I'll tell you, it's getting tougher and tougher, I'm sorry. All right, so we've done that, we've done that. FinCom, are you all here? Everybody here that you want? Do you want to get started?
I believe, I think the only person that is missing is Lynn. Lynn, are you on the line?
Or Aaron.
Aaron's there.
Aaron's here.
Who's 8:30?
That's probably me, my phone, my cell phone.
Oh, that's your cell phone, okay.
Oh, I see you as separate.
Yeah, network reliability is iffy sometimes when I have that many people in my house trying to get through at the same time. So this is my backup.
You still only get one vote, Victor.
Oh, you caught me, Alan. All these meetings of FinCom.
Okay, well, if you would like to start, go ahead. Otherwise, I suppose we should get started on our.
No, I think we can go ahead and get started. We're just five minutes, five minutes early and we have our quorum. So I'll take the note here at 7:25 and we'll convene FinCom to meet with the Board of Selectmen on the agenda item that's, or sent you on the, and the item to discuss FY21 budget as well as ATM recommendation from FinCom. All right, so just a little bit of context. And I know Kate was on our meeting on Thursday. So last week, FinCom began its efforts to begin to get our arms around FY21 budget. It started the week, two extended meetings, about four hours each with a break in between to really hear from the different departments around what a 5% reduction would mean. And I think there are certain observations, I think, we all made from that discussion. Not an easy exercise. I think for a large part of the departments and committees, it meant essentially because of the nature of their budgets, it essentially means reducing services or reducing hours. I think the other thing that really kind of came about in that discussion, you know, that we actually debriefed on Thursday, really is around the uncertainty that we have. I think FinCom is accountable for bringing a recommendation to Town Meeting around a budget. And the 5%, not hazard, but was a number that we chose to stimulate the discussion across the different departments. And certainly we heard things from, for example, the schools in terms of uncertainty for next year, in terms of how they're going to manage schooling the children, there's an uncertainty around how they're going to do that, whether some of the social distancing requirements would require a different way of kind of bringing them into the schools or whatnot. We also heard from like police and COA, you know, how the reality is, is that there are a lot of important services that need to be delivered to the town, especially during this time. And so we heard all of that. And as we convened on Thursday to really think through and begin to digest some of this, one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about and discussing is perhaps the item that we probably should cover off first, you know, tonight, really is around whether addressing essentially the FY21 budget at a later date, meaning moving the Town Meeting, would be more advisable. And I think, I don't know, Tim, did you want to give me, sent you co-chair for me a share slides? Or did you want to put up the slides that I actually shared with you earlier today?
I'll make you a co-host, Victor, if that's, if that's all right.
Yep, either way.
Let me find your number, there we go.
Actually, it would be just my, you know, just my name, not the number.
The number, I mean your name, gotcha. Okay, I think you, you should be all set.
All right, let's see if I can get this thing to work here. I'm going to go down here, it says share screen. And I'm going to share this one. Let me know if you can see that.
Just there.
All right, I was able to navigate technology. All right, so I gave you the backdrop for our Thursday meeting. And we spent a large part of our Thursday meeting kind of discussing this aspect of consideration of the budget. So there are three areas of uncertainty that we kind of discussed. And you may have, may or may not have read this in the mosquito little article that they had out there, which I think they did a good job summarizing. I had that earlier, uncertainty around CPS and CH, the high school. What are the financial implications of how the schools operate in the next year, given the new normal or being on our way to the new normal? I think that was one of the key areas of uncertainty. The other aspect of uncertainty is really around the state funding. What will be the impact of reduced state revenue on local funding? And the third one is obviously, Kate was kind enough to send some information that she had around unemployment, you know, being north of 20% in Carlyle at the projection or estimate. And the question, even with that information, is what is the extent of the unemployment impact on Carlyle? Because while that is a good snapshot for now, there are many that are actually thinking that it's going to get worse before it gets better. So where and to what extent does that unemployment go? And ultimately, what the impact is back to us? So those three areas of uncertainty led us to a robust discussion around, you know, if we were to postpone a consideration of the budget until a later date, which would require us to move Town Meeting, would some of this be a little bit more clear? It's never going to be 100% clear, but would it, would some of it become more clear? And the answer is, if you look across all three of these, the answer is yes, right? I think CPS and CHS over the summer, I think we'll have a better clarity in terms of whether the four-phase opening of the economy within Massachusetts, it progresses or we end up in a place where we end up regressing. Where, as the governor noted, it's like, if we get to stage two and. if we get to stage two and essentially there's increased hospitalization and increased deaths, then we're going to move back to stage one. So I think give us, given a couple of months and looking at the, on Monday, essentially the, the briefing, in terms of his timeline over the next month, six weeks to eight weeks or so, I think he's looking to make those progressions, you know, through the different phases. And, and by the middle of summer, we'll have a pretty good idea of whether we're progressing in terms of opening it or actually not. And I think that will also give a better sense of, you know, what we may need to do from a education standpoint. I think the same thing is state funding. I think Aaron is our kind of resident expert in that, and I'd certainly ask him to chime in on this, as they, you know, given the summer, there's lots of discussion, not only in Massachusetts, but, you know, in, in all the states in terms of the impact of COVID on the economy and ultimately what it means, you know, for budgets. And if you actually read the news, and I had something from Wall Street Journal today, there's many, many states that are actually reducing even core services like fire department, police and whatnot, or they're considering it at the moment. But given the summer and seeing where unemployment goes a bit, and that's the last bit of uncertainty, I think we'll have a better idea from the state perspective in terms of what they're projecting and what they're sensing is going to be the impact from a budget perspective. And the last one is unemployment, you know, obviously it's very dependent on how we open up the economy, whether we can progress through the phases, whether we get stuck in the phases as we begin to try to open it up. And ultimately, we can see, have a better read in terms of the unemployment, you know, given a couple of months as we're trying to reopen the economy. Right now, we just have a read as to what it looks like having shut down for eight weeks, but now they were opening it up. We can, we can see whether that flattens, stops, or it shifts direction for us, and I think that will give us a better read in a couple of months. So those were the key aspects of the uncertainty that we discussed. There are other considerations. These are, some are financial, some are not necessarily financial. One is the budget reductions will likely increase discussion and interest at ATM. And this was evidenced by our two days of long meetings with the departments, where I'll tell you, it's like on Monday, I don't think I've ever seen more people at a FinCom meeting than on Monday, when we're reviewing and discussing, you know, the public school budget. And so that, I think we had over forty people, which is probably a record for us. But, you know, if we actually go implement reductions, you got interested parties for the school, interested party for COA, essentially, this is one thing that we need to kind of consider, which is not a financial one, but in order to be able to run a safe town meeting, I think the whole thought process is that we want to make sure it's quick, it's not, not protracted, and obviously, you know, not having the entire town there on the field if we're doing it outside or inside. The second thing is, and this is a key consideration as well, is that the rescheduled date of ATM is actually dependent on the state of emergency, and I could be corrected on this, but it's my understanding is, once that state of emergency is lifted, I believe it's thirty days we need to have a meeting in that. I don't think I got a good read on Monday whether that's going to change in terms of that declaration, but I think that's another consideration. And then, you know, obviously we go to implications, you know, I think a couple implications is that if we're to delay consideration of FY twenty-one budget, you know, any budget reductions would not be implemented until that period of time. One might argue that we automatically kind of have a somewhat of a, at least a flat budget or somewhat of a control in terms of the increase or reduction. But that said, if we took a five percent reduction, and that's where we ended up going, it would not start month one, right? It'd have to start month, whatever the ATM is that we have, it would start after that. And then there's that other consideration of other decisions, right? This is not only, the only decision that's on the warrant. There are other decisions that, you know, may need to be considered, and that's, that's another implication that we, obviously you guys need to consider as well. But from a financial standpoint, not unanimous, but nearly unanimous, I think that FinCom is recommending postponing it to gain a bit more visibility in terms of the uncertainty that will allow us, help us better understand the, the degree of reductions that we may need to take for FY twenty-one. So I'll pause there, allow any of the FinCom members, if there's anything that I missed, anything that you want to add, feel free, and then I think we just open it up to discussion. You know, we can allow the, the group to have a discussion around that. Anything from FinCom in terms of what I just shared?
I think you did great, Victor.
Oh, good.
All right. So we can begin the discussion around this, and this is, this is obviously I thought, there are some things that will happen the next, you know, few weeks or so. It's not that if it gets delayed that we're going to kind of stop thinking about the budget. I think there'll be continued discussion around that. But any thoughts from the Board of Selectmen in terms of what was shared? And Kate, you certainly can chime in too, because you, you were definitely a part of that lengthy discussion that we had on Thursday around this.
Well, you guys did the discussion. I mean, I just, I listened. I gave you the information about the unemployment. So, yeah.
I, I have some questions, if I may.
Yes.
So, you know, we are, we're already planning on a fall, a fall town meeting. Is it possible for us to do a budget and then revise that budget in a fall town meeting?
Yes, I believe, and I could be corrected on this one, I believe it is possible to do that. That's one of the, I think Jim Dar had brought that up for consideration.
Just because I think, I think it would be good for people to kind of know, kind of what our priorities are for the year, even though COVID is going on. And I think that we kind of lose that without a town meeting and without some kind of a budget, though probably greatly reduced budget. Or I don't even know, I mean, can you only do like, can you do like a half a year budget or what, well, maybe that would be stupid. But, you know, but just with the, the idea that there will be another annual town meeting, there, there are other things, there are other warrant articles. I mean, certainly, you know, there's, there's other warrant articles that, you know, I'd be willing to ax even more just for financial reasons, but there's some that I really think that we need to address. So I think the drawback of no annual town meeting is fairly significant, because there's things that I think the town should be considering. But I totally get what you're saying is that there's so much in the, up in the air, you know, it, it make, it seems to me like it would make sense for us to put something together, knowing that we're going to revise it when we learn more in the future.
And Nathan, are you, Nathan, are you suggesting that the, the budget that we put together would then be adopted at, at a town meeting in June?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I'm, yeah, I'm suggesting that, you know, yeah, that, that the town knows what our direction is and we've, we've, we've set the goals rather than just doing a one-twentieth, because the one-twentieth doesn't give us some of the warrant article items. Those, those have to be specified. So for instance, no complete streets, if we don't do annual town meeting, you know, that's, that's just gone. We don't have that opportunity anymore. You know, I, I think, I think there's other ones, I just quickly looked and that, that popped up. I mean, Municipal Facilities Committee, I'd be willing to say, let's deal with that in the fall, when we know more about, you know, where we are. But, you know, I just, just, I, I'd hate to just completely punt the annual town meeting.
So, and so this is partly my ignorance as well in, in terms of this. Again, I think one of the considerations that, you know, we can surface it back up is, you know, I'll, I'll kind of put it out there. If we put a five percent reduction and it hits, and it hits home, there is going to be a lot of discussion, or actually, there's going to be a lot of comment on it. So that, I think that's a consideration to make with regards to this. But certainly, we can talk about how we might be able to mitigate that in, in other ways. One question that I did ask, and this is, could be my ignorance, right? So we're not fully through the, the fiscal year, but is it possible, and the whole concept of special town meetings, is there things that the, the town wants to consider, and it's not your annual town meeting where you consider the budget in, in its entirety? Is that, and I think it surfaces as a option or a question to Tim, whether it makes sense to take a small set of articles and send it through kind of a shortened special town meeting where you're not actually, you know, putting forward a budget, a budget that has reasonably impactful reductions to it, and just consider those warrant articles through that. I don't know if that, you know, special time meetings have to be done in the fall, but in concept that the year is not over yet, and we haven't had our annual town meeting for the, for the next year, not sure whether that was an option or not. That was one thought that I had earlier in the week.
Basically, you could have a special town meeting at any point during the year. I, I, I think if we were to have one in June, let's say you could certainly vote on warrant articles and so forth, without voting an operating budget, you'd be starting fiscal twenty-one with the one-twelfth budget that, you know, so that would be the scenario until you could vote an operating budget at a later point. I think it's certainly, certainly possible. I think the committee that's assisting the moderator with the planning of the town meeting, I think the feeling is if, if, if you can plan a town meeting and pull it off, you might as well vote the budget too. That if you can, if you can get a hundred and fifty people in some location for two or three hours, you know, you might as well do all the business you can do. I, I do agree that the warrant's been kind of skinny down a little bit. It could probably lose a few more articles and not really affect, and as Nathan said, there's some things that, you know, are not so time sensitive that they couldn't wait a few months. I would think the, if you're going to have a town meeting in June, I would think it would make sense not to vote the operating budget.
So, this is, this is Melissa McMaro. I was wondering if it would be helpful if Kim, and maybe even Tim, and Scott, I know, have been on, and on a lot of statewide webinars or whatever you want to call them, where other people have been debating the pros and cons. Is there anything else either of you or any of you think is relevant to, to the decision?
This is, this is Kim. I, I tend to get more the feeling that more are going to go with the one-twelfth. I was actually on with our field rep this, this, this morning with DLS, and we're trying to find out how late we could push it to actually make that decision, because a lot of towns are asking that, because you have to have your one-twelfth budget approved in June in order to spend on July one. If you don't have a town meeting budget or a one-twelfth monthly budget approved by DLS, you cannot spend anything on July one. So we're trying to find out what that window is, is the latest we could actually submit to the Department of Local Services to do a one-twelfth. Because you really probably couldn't wait and have a town meeting if something happened and try and put a one-twelfth budget up on June twenty-fourth. So we're trying to find out when our absolute last date is that we have to make that decision.
I think that, what, what I've heard is that DLS is recommending, even towns that are planning on a June town meeting, is a precautionary measure to submit that one-twelfth budget because disaster could, could strike, and maybe you can't have town meeting for some unforeseen reason, and you're sort of, you'd be dead in the water if you didn't have the one-twelfth.
We have, we have a hurricane on the day of, for the week of town meeting, yeah.
Right. I think what they're, what they're doing is they would rather, if everybody's definite on it, has made the decision, they'll get those in first instead of town that might have it, because there's going to be a lot to adopt out. So there is a, going to be a deadline on it. But yes, we have to prepare for both.
It makes, it makes sense to, to prepare for the, the one-twelfth town meeting. Victor, I mean, how, how much deeper of a cut is the five percent over a, a flat budget from last year? It's not that deep, right?
So what, I'm not following exactly the, the question.
So you, you asked the departments to come up with a five percent cut in the budget that they had submitted, right?
Yeah, it was five percent of guideline, right?
Of guideline, which was relatively flat to the prior, prior year minus cost of living adjustments and whatnot. So if we did not pass a, a budget, essentially, cost of living adjustments would not go into effect July first. That's one reduction that would automatically happen.
In terms of the impact on the total budget, the five percent represents something a little over a million dollars, isn't that correct?
It's one point.
One point two million or so.
And I also, you know, also understand, no matter what, the high school budget will not be included in the operating budget. That is going to automatically go to a one-twelfth budget, and that's roughly twenty percent of our operating budget.
Yeah, so we, we don't have a real reflection of a budget. We can't put a real budget together.
And we have a contract, and it's not exactly one point five either, because some of it is under, you know, contractual, right? So we can't really reduce those per se.
Right. My other concern is, when it came up when we were discussing preparing for the election, is without the mosquito publishing, and it only is available online, and a lot of people don't have online access, can the discussion occur townwide on many of these important topics when that in fact is a serious constraint on our information distributing ability?
Yeah, that was one of the things that was, was somewhat discussed as a part of the committee that is, and I'm, I'm part of that committee, and Wayne's not here yet, but in terms of how do you get information out and try to obviously minimize the amount of discussion at the, you know, annual town meeting. So obviously, you don't want to be going like multiple nights, you know, that very often happens. So part of that was, I think, trying to address that through, and I think this hits your point, Alan, you know, having online, you know, Zoom types of meetings, let's just say in terms of our presentation of the budget, trying to have the discussions before, having warrants, warrant articles, having, you know, video presentations to that posted, you know, in advance, so if you could review it, some forum to be able to discuss it. But that all requires electronic media, and I think that's one of the things you're highlighting, Alan, is that, you know, not everybody may have accessibility to that.
Yes, exactly, thank you.
I mean, for my, I was.
Are, are we confident that that will change in September? You know, I, I was the dissenter in the vote last week, and, and I have always made a practice of supporting the majority views, but I, I think I should at least express why I dissented from that vote. First is that I do not, we will maybe have less uncertainty in September, we will still have it next spring. We all expect this to carry into fiscal twenty-two, and, you know, we can't keep delaying important decisions. Secondly, I think, you know, contrary to what Victor was just saying, I think it's important for citizens to have a chance to discuss these things in a forum like town meeting, if it is feasible to do that, because there is so much anxiety and doubt among those citizens. And this is the one annual time when people can get a sense of the state of the town. And then the third, and that'll be my last comment, is I think it, it sends, at least I think it sends a strange message for us to go into the next fiscal year, actually spending exactly what we spent last July nineteen, spending July twenty the same amount as if nothing has happened in between. And yet, twenty percent of our fellow citizens are unemployed. So I feel like we need to make, take a crack at this, and crack at reducing expenditures. But anyway, that was my basis for dissent, but otherwise I will withdraw.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to clarify what I was saying earlier, my, my comment wasn't that that's the best way of doing it, but I think there was a concern around the ability to be able to conduct a town meeting in the way that is safe without having some of the discussion happen beforehand. And I think that's where the conversation was going, and Wayne can certainly chime in when he gets here around that.
Another question, if we were to go, if we were to defer town meeting to the fall, the annual town meeting and defer the budget until then, and went on the one-twelfth mode for however many months we had to go on, on it, would that necessarily result in very draconian budgetary reductions for the rest of the year? would that necessarily result in very draconian budgetary reductions for the rest of the year? Or could those reductions be spread out over other years? For instance, probably through borrowing or something, I don't know. I don't know enough about how we finance things, one way or the other, to do that. But is that scenario where we would have to make very, very severe reductions later on in the year if we didn't do it earlier?
Yeah, so, you know, at least in our discussion, essentially, if, I'll use the example of the 5%. If after, you know, three months and we have the annual town meeting and we maintain that as the 5% reductions, obviously you've gone through three months of spend and now you have to kind of catch up to that. That said, and, you know, if it comes in underneath that and you end up saying, well, maybe it's 2%, then it might not be as, you know, the catch up may not be as significant in that. And I just use it as a hypothetical example to describe what the numbers would look like.
The 1/12 too is really what you want to do is I would consider keeping on like you've done now with the departments, you know, don't spend anything that you don't have to, anything that's not necessary. So you'd kind of still tighten your belts, it wouldn't be like an open budget. You'd be taking a minimum of 1/12, figuring out what your expenditure estimate would be for that month for your operations in your general fund. And then you build on top of that your regional school district pension or debt service. So you can control it. You're going to put in for expenditures and that of what you want to spend for that month. So you can pull back on the departments and, you know, with their budgets and not be like, you know, just the minimum of what you need, your salaries and what you need to operate through. And then the hope would be in the fall, you'd know maybe what the state's going to do with their revenue because that's going to dictate, you know, what your tax rate would be and all that. So I do think with a 1/12, you're going to be very, you know, conservative, you know, with that too.
And the regional school district has told us they run under 1/12 for July and August, understandably.
Usually, yes.
And without the COLA, we save a couple percent.
Correct. You would not include COLA or any collective bargaining agreement that's not previously approved by a legislative body.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think the thing that, just clarification on the 1/12. I think people have heard the minimum of 1/12. But I think, and Kim, you can correct me, if you don't spend the 1/12, it actually just carries forward, right, into.
Right, or if you give, correct, if you give a, but you're going to give an approved budget. If you say 3 million we'll spend in July, if you spend 2.8, that other 300,000 would roll into August. And then you submit a budget for August for if you wanted 2.6 that month because it's lower. And then the difference would roll. But you can't spend over what you've been approved to for that month.
So Kim, are you saying, this is Barney, are you saying that that the FinCom would have to prepare a month-by-month budget that goes?
Actually, the selectmen have to do it. Okay, so, I mean, we do it by, we would sit down, Priscilla, myself, Tim, you know, and there's a forum that's coming out on Gateway. And we would sit down and see what our, you know, start with our minimum 1/12 and see what our actual expenditures would be for operations for that month. And then obviously in July, it's going to be more because we have the retirement payment that's large. And that's important to do because there's a significant savings paying for that. So we would say, oh, so we would then figure out our expenses. And then we would ask DOR, Sean Cronin would approve the budget that we requested. We cannot spend more than that. So if the bills are coming in, you're keeping track of it, you're spending that in July. And then in July, you're putting a budget together for August. And like Melissa said, the school's on a lower budget then. So that could be closer to the 1/12. You don't have any other big payment, so that month would be a little lower. And then once you set your town meeting, whatever your budget is operating, then you deduct what you'd spent over the last three months. And there's accounting, you know, to it. But it's basically a month-by-month budget, minimum 1/12, and based on what you need for operations to get through. So if we have a debt payment, that can be included in over the 1/12, so that you would do that. But you would keep your departments pretty, you know, I would suggest that no major expenditure or anything normally that they, whatever they kind of like is now, just spend only what you need to for your operations for this next few months.
I have one other question, and that is if we go and do our annual town meeting in June, do we need to add a warrant article on the warrant that would, I would say, protect our free cash?
Well, your free cash, if you had an annual town meeting before June 30, if your free cash amount would, then whatever you spent, the rest would stop. And you wouldn't get the cash amount till you closed your books and did your balance sheet. So yes, you would want to put some of that free cash into like a stabilization fund or some type of reserve. So should you need that, you know, going forward? Because that is a consideration, free cash. If you don't have a town meeting in June 30, it continues till you do have the actual annual town meeting. But it will close if you have the annual town meeting prior to June 30.
And is there an advantage to having the town meeting before June 30 in terms of that?
No, I think some towns think it's more of an advantage after because they might be able to see what their, you know, state. We have a smaller amount of state revenue, but the whole thing is just trying to see what your revenues are going to be to offset, so you know what type of budget you want. And predominantly Carlisle's is, you know, taxes. And then depending on, but if, you know, state aid, certain things are cut a lot, we've got to compensate, you know, for that. And I guess having the free cash, you'd also know in an idea what your free cash would be closing FY '20 because you'd be a few months in and you could kind of do a little bit of finding out what your true revenues were, what you, you know, what you closed FY '20. So you're going to be able to see what you're looking into to the next year. So that gives you a little bit of a view that way. Where before town meeting, you're still having tax payments come in and a few more things. You're still paying bills through July 15. You're not going to know what your surplus, so to speak, is in FY '20 till a little later into the summer.
So Kim, just two follow-up questions. You know, one is on this particular topic, you did say that there was something we could do as a warrant article in order to protect ourselves against what you're talking about with, right now with free cash?
Right, but if you have 2 million of free cash, and Scott was talking, different ones is you could put a million of it in your stabilization fund. And then in September, if you had a town meeting, you could use funds from the stabilization.
Okay, so it seems to me like, you know, it seems to me like then this isn't an issue.
No.
It just means we have to have another warrant article. So this isn't.
If you're, you would put it, if you're going to have an annual town meeting prior to June 30, I would suggest, yeah, upping your reserve fund and putting an article in to put what you want as a reserve in your stabilization fund.
And that would solve the negative that you were bringing up here?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I have was something you stated earlier about the 1/12. You said that you could, like, if you spent $300,000 less one month, you could carry it forward.
Forward.
But then you said that in any month, you can't, but you can't spend any more than you budgeted for that month. I was confused.
So if you had, if you get, you know, 3 million and you didn't use, you know, did 2.9, you have 100,000 at the end of the month. And you've got a budget for the next month for 2.5 million, you'd actually have 2.6 million. So you'd have what you had got approved by DOR. And if you had any money, any part of the budget left over from the prior month that you didn't pay a bill on.
Okay, so in any month, you can't spend more than what was budgeted or what was not spent from previous month's budgets?
Correct. And then each month, and of course, if you built too much, you've got to, you're giving this all to DOR on a monthly basis. All of a sudden, if you have a large amount sitting there, probably going to give you a reduced budget for the following month.
Okay.
So it's pretty much a month by month. And the selectmen have to approve the amount of the budget that you're submitting to DOR. And it has to be certified by the clerk. And then they approve it. And if it's reasonable, you shouldn't have a problem. If you're throwing 5 million out in one month and they don't see it, they could come back and say no or, you know, vice versa. But it should pretty much be, you know, once we get going on it and doing it, pretty seamless in the sense of what we're going to be requesting and the backup for it. But it's all through Gateway and there's documentation on what expenditures it covers. And it has to be voted and approved by the selectmen and then uploaded by the clerk of the selectmen.
But if we were to put forward an operating budget at town meeting in June and it were to be passed, then we would not, we would just continue on that new FY '21 budget, operating off of that budget.
Correct, unless you had a special town meeting and you made different votes and adjustments to it.
And Kim, also with the exception of the regional school committee budget, automatic to 1/12.
Right, that's automatic, that's, that's not until, yeah, not until Concord has their town meeting.
Yeah, Kim, I have another question for you. Where are we right now in terms of FY '20 and the collection of the final property tax payment from Carlisle residence?
Well, of course, it's still not late, so they have a chance to pay it, you know, to the end. It's actually looking really, really good. There's only about a little over $1 million left outstanding. And that's with 250 taxpayers. So we're doing.
250 people.
That's not paid, and it accounts for about $1 million, but it's still not late. We could get it. So it's slowly coming in now, but it's a good, we're doing, we're doing well. That's a good number to be at.
Yeah, and then, just so we're all on the same page. So whatever we do around a budget going into FY '21, you would still, we would still be issuing the first round of the property tax bill for FY '21.
Until I hear differently, yes, we, July 1, the bills will be in the mail for a preliminary tax.
And that would be due in August, that first round.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything on that. And, you know, obviously, we'd probably have to borrow too. If you have a lot of payments coming in, that's imperative to start the year with your, you know, money and your cash flow. But right now, July 1, the bills will go out due August 1st. I have heard no delay on that.
So the only real reason that I've heard not to go ahead and do annual town meeting and the operating budget in that town meeting is because of a desire to not have a lot of discussion. I mean, it seems to me like, I mean, I completely agree with Jim. I think we should move forward. I think we should do a very lean budget, just with the understanding that we're going to have another round at it. We're going to take another crack at it in the fall. And in that way, we're not doing this month-to-month thing, which could just get us in trouble and just be a whole lot more work. So I would, you know, again, I think it needs to be a very lean budget. I think we need to have, you know, a really good reason as to why we're doing it during town meeting. But we should do one and make sure that these other warrant articles, I think, you know, board of selectmen, I think we need to go back through and cut out other ones that are, you know, that we don't think are super high priorities or that can wait until the fall. And then just make sure that, you know, that we are voting on other things. Like there's tax relief for some citizens in the warrant articles. You know, I think, you know, there's complete streets and, you know, we're going to lose that money. So I vote for moving forward with the town meeting with a very, very lean operating budget. We have the discussion and then next fall, we redo the budget again. And we put that article in that Kim was talking about to make sure we're preserving free cash in some way.
Yeah, so let me make sure that, sorry Nathan, just let me, shall we clarify that the FinCom is not making a recommendation to not, due to the fact of a discussion at the town meeting. When you say lean budget, these uncertainty factors are the piece that, I think that's the thing that we're going to sit that was, how lean do you want to make it? Are you not going to put COLA in? And these are all discussions that we can have, right? Are you not going to put COLA in, you're going to apply 5%? Are you going to ask for reductions in hours? Those are all pieces that, you know, when you say a very lean budget, that's exactly why the uncertainty plays into that, is how lean is very lean. But I just want to make sure it's clear, you know, the recommendation from FinCom has nothing to do with the annual town meeting and having a lot of people for discussion. That in the slide, as you see, is other considerations that was not necessarily the main focus of FinCom.
It was a safety concern.
That's right.
That it might draw larger people. And it's really unknown variables at this time. It is the main basis for the recommendation.
And actually, this is Aaron, so just unfairness on, I'm sorry, I've been quiet the whole time. And I probably was on the opposite side of Jim in the meeting. So I do want to just throw in a couple of words on this. I think for my concern, it's multifold. One is, from schools' point of view, there are definitely going to be more requirements that schools are going to have to comply with from, to just reopen schools in September, if they do reopen. And so if we went ahead and decided a 5% cut on schools, not the high school, but obviously the elementary, middle school. So that might actually feel like a 10% or 15% cut, depending on what new policies they have to put in place. Like, for instance, if they have to do more buses or stagger the class times for students, you know, and basically pay their teachers more. You know, a 5% cut decided in late June might actually have the impact of something dramatically more. We don't know what chapter 70 is going to do over the summer. The state's not going to know their closeout numbers for fiscal year '20 way later than normal. So normally, we get all our money in April, or the majority of our tax revenue in April. That's happening in July now. And so my guess is the state budget's not going to be really settled until, you know, late July, maybe August. And so that was one point for me, you know, like, it's really important to see what happens over the summer. The other point is, any sort of decision to cut things, there, I'm sure people are going to want to vet that out publicly. And I just, I personally don't feel comfortable going to a June town meeting from safety point of view. But I don't even know if it's even feasible because best-case scenario will be in phase two at that point. And everything I've read is, you know, it's 10 persons or under in a room. So I'm not sure how you would, you know, get that done. So just wanted to throw that out there.
I'd like to chime in. I started more on the side of we need to have a budget. And I've kind of gravitated toward the 1/12 and I support the 1/12. And I think a main reason is I do think we can accomplish the leaning of the budget that we need to over the summer months and perhaps even more effectively through a 1/12 budget. If we take that approach, we know for certainty what the budgets look like, at least for the summer, in areas that we directly control like OPEB, wouldn't have long-term caps. These are levers that we would likely pull anyway to reduce the budget. We have certainty of what's going to happen. I do worry about going to a town meeting if there's a reduced quorum. I don't, there's a myriad of things that could happen. Everything from smaller turnout, maybe more niche turnout, supporting certain things. I expect we'll have contested or a lot of budget holds potentially because we're going to have to finalize the budget recommendation next week. So we're not going to have approval of the school committee. We're not going to have necessarily sign off from the different areas. So you run the risk, there is a risk that the budget could get modified adversely in terms of warrants getting passed that might not otherwise be passed or budget holds and budget amendments at town meeting that are above the 1/12 or above our recommendation. I don't know how that would play out. But to think that just by going to a town meeting, we're going to be in a better financial position, I think, is in terms of a leaner budget, I don't know that we can assume that. We're talking about July and August and then maybe, you know, half of September that we need to bridge. And our biggest department, schools, one, you know, regional, we're going to have to just do a town meeting around that anyway. And the CPS budget. And the CPS budget is a lower spend month, those months. So I think from financial standpoint, we can accomplish the leaning of the budget we need via the one twelfth. And I think it just gives us more time to better understand what's going on with state aid, what's going on with local receipts. And I think it gives us more flexibility rather than saying, let's approve this budget now, we're going to change it later. That just creates, you know, even more uncertainty, I think. If you're, if you're letting people know, this is the budget we're approving, but don't worry, we'll be back in the fall and we can change it. I just think it's, there's a lot of unknowns to that approach that give me pause.
This is Barney. I, a couple of thoughts. One is, you know, I understand the, the, the tightness of the timetable if we were to want to put a, you know, a warrant article up for the operating budget for next year minus the high school. But I think it, it's really our collective job to make it possible ahead of time for people to participate in talking about that and discussing it. And I suspect that if we were to have hearings, that we would see a, a much greater participation via Zoom than we've had appearing hearings in the past. Now, obviously, if you're talking about cuts, then that'll definitely bring people out. But I, I think, I, I mean, I think that's part of our job to figure out how to get information out there and allow people to have an opportunity to talk about it before you get to town meeting. The other thought is that I have is it, the, the proposed operating, it's not a choice between continue on one twelfth or propose a fiscal year twenty one budget that's got a five percent across the board reduction, right? I mean, you could do something either varying the amount of the cut in particular departments or just a lower percentage. Am I right in thinking that?
We haven't made a budget recommendation. The five percent was what.
Right, I understand it was an exercise, but everybody came in with, with what their five percent would be.
No, that's, the school did not present a, CPS did not present a five percent budget reduction.
Right, I heard that part of the, their presentation, but I think that was, I understand why they didn't do that in that public arena, but I'm just wondering, is there, but have you all discussed the possibility of putting forward a budget for next year that is a smaller percentage reduction?
I don't think we ever assumed that there would automatically be a five percent cut for everybody. Certainly, I would support.
Correct. Yeah. So I think, if you think of it from, oh, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about going forward, you know, with the same budget that we've had, even though I hear that you're saying we could figure out ways to, you know, keep a close eye on that and potentially, you know, be implementing reductions. But I'm concerned that, should we get to the fall and see that, you know, things have not improved, if anything, they're worse financially, then we're talking about a much bigger problem that we, that we haven't made any, you know, we haven't taken any steps toward, you know, tightening our belts other than what we can do kind of, you know, on frankly, the, you know, the quote easier items that, you know, don't involve reductions in hours or reductions in staff. And I understand that that is really, really difficult. But I'm, I'm concerned about the impact of waiting.
Well, the, the, see if I'm unmuted here, yep. I guess the, the issue is if you, if whatever reductions you take, if we're going in with a reduced budget on June thirtieth, then the only way you can accomplish the kind of reductions that we probably ought to be doing, or, or at least what we think we might have to be doing, is going to have personnel effects. And do you want to prematurely do those, you know, fire people, frankly? If, if it turns out it isn't necessary, if we find out by the end of the summer that the cuts aren't as draconian as we thought they were, at least it gives us that kind of breathing room before we go around affecting a lot of people's lives. We can do it with, from a much better understanding of where we are financially.
So I just want to clarify, you were then arguing for the one twelfth budget.
Yeah, and I've been, and that, I originally didn't think that way, but I'm coming around very quickly to that, yes.
Okay, I just, I just want to be sure that I, that what you were saying.
Yep, I mean, that plus, plus the fact that we're going to disenfranchise people who don't have the ability to participate in discussions or any kind of information input on Zoom. Well, I, you know, that's not a lot of people, I think. It can be a very important component of our town constituency.
So it really, I, I'm not the, you know, I'm not a, at the level of forecasting what the economy is going to do over the next summer, over the next three months, but are we really expecting it to be that, that we'll know a whole lot more in two months?
But I think we'll know more from what I've understood from listening in on the FinCom, is we'll know a lot more about the schools, for sure. Because we'll know, are they opening? Are they not opening? Are they doing, you know, is it going to be more expensive? Is it going to be less expensive? If they don't open, I don't think it's going to be more expensive. But if they do open, it for sure is going to be more expensive, so. I don't know. So that's one item right there, is the schools.
And that's a big one. That's a big one.
It's most of our budget.
Right.
So cutting, honestly, we could cut ten percent of the other part of the budget, we still won't be there.
It's over sixty percent of the budget.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah.
And we'll have a lot better understanding of how the state might be going to address it as well. I mean, they're going to, I mean, we're, you know, we're property tax dependent and that's probably, you know, that's, that's going to be delayed for some time for us, probably. The state is sales tax dependent and that's going to be a major cut that they're going to have to deal with.
Sales and income tax.
Sales and income tax, yep.
Yeah, and I, I did go back on the website. It's up, unemployment is up another one percent since May second. It's went from twenty point nine to twenty one point nine between May second and May ninth now, so. It's still trending up.
Yeah.
It hasn't, hasn't flattened out yet. That's an hard.
And I would expect it to, I would expect it to continue to slowly trend up until at least some of the economy begins to open back up. And I think the question is, is once that happens, does it continue to trend up? Because that is a very distinct possibility. Or does it flatten out, you know, because of that? And I think that's, that's part of the, the, the look forward in, in the next few months in terms of the phase opening, you know, that, that's what I was saying earlier. As you go through that, you can see whether that's having effect as well as whether you have to reverse, right? Whether you go to phase three and say, oh, shoot, you know, COVID's coming back, we've got to reverse back. And, you know, obviously, over the next six weeks, you see it goes through a couple of phases. We'll, we'll definitely have a good read as to whether it, it's all about how, how well people implement and follow the guidelines. Because I think, you know, that's a big piece, that's a big question, right? They're asking people to sign off on it. Whether it ends up being done in, in practice, like I go to the grocery store and now people have masks and they don't really care that they're six feet from you anymore. And this is the general observation that I've had. You know, whether people adhere to it, that'll be indicative in terms of whether the, the movement of the phases continues.
I want to say the other thing is, what I, my, my big nightmare is we pass a budget and we're cooking along and the people that were able to pay their property taxes this time around because they had enough savings, they've, they've been laid off, but they, they were able to scrape up enough money or they might even, you know, our next time around or the time after that, the third quarter and fourth quarter might get worse and we, our revenues get choked off and we don't have any money to pay our salaries. And then, boy, I'll tell you, that'll be a fun job. Figuring out, you know, we, we can't go out and borrow money. Can't print any money. I've been thinking about it, but I've been told it's illegal. So, you know.
I think we have that problem with either scenario there, Kate, right?
Well.
I mean, if, if it's a one twelfth budget, you know, I mean, neither one of these budgets are that, that far off from each other. I, I think, I, I, I think we have that problem either way.
Well, we may, I don't know. I, I, as I said, I, all I can tell you is what, you know, my own private little worries is, maybe they're unfounded and irrational, but they're, they, they do keep me up at night. Cash flows, that keeps me up at night. Cash flow is, you know, we'll have to see how they do. I'll have to do a RAN, revenue anticipation note, or BRRRR against stabilization if we need to for whatever to get, you know, to get through. A lot of towns because they have a lot with local receipts that are going down there, they're having a hard time right now because they're closing the year with a big, big deficit on that. So there's a lot of unknowns, uncertainties.
So if we go with one twelfth, could somebody describe to me like what, what is the monthly process?
Um, the full, I don't know, Tim Seymour, when I, they have not put the form actually up on the gateway yet. So we have not been able to see exactly what it is. But there's a, I have, they, they have a IGR kind of out on it right now of like little bit of templates. So it'll be basically, again, starting with like your minimum base one twelfth and then figuring if you have debt assessments or any major payments during that time. And putting the expenditures down and submitting, you know, an expenditure budget to DOR. But we haven't seen all the guidelines and we have not seen the form yet.
So the one twelfth is a minimum of one twelfth of last year's budget plus additional things that have come up that we need to do.
Right, and you want to be cautious with it. It's, it's a minute, it's basically, it's a one twelfth and you do minimum estimates to include operations by the town. You don't want to miss a debt payment, you don't want to miss the payment to the retirement board because that'll cost you, you know, the interest for three months on that, so that's a big one. So it's, it's just a way to function so that towns can operate, but you do need to be concerned because if you put a budget in in September and it's lower and you've already spent X amount in the past three months, you know, that's coming off of the top, so. You know, and then there's also accounting direction that has to come out on that too, how to do it. But whatever you're spending in those three months is going to be deducted off whatever operating budget you vote when you finally have your town meeting.
We're, we're not.
Well, eventually we'll have.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's up to what town meeting wants to do, right?
Right.
It seems like going one twelfth could actually end up costing us a lot more.
I guess the other question I have is if we do it, let's say we do our five percent budget and, and we pass that, can we also still, you know, freeze, you know, the departments and say, but you can't spend it? Unless, or if there's something, you know, discretionary, you can spend it, but only after it's been, you know, all approved by, because, you know, we, we still need to keep the brakes on until we know better where we are. Right, and if you're doing a one twelfth and you haven't included something in a budget and somebody comes in and says, hey, I have this five thousand dollar bill for this month and it's not part of the, you know, we're all going to have to work together on that too, to make sure we, you know, so I think each month you'll be viewing of, you're basically going to look ahead of it and say, what are we going to pay, you know, in July? And now in July, we're going to, you know, put a budget and what, what bills are we paying in August? So you can't have a lot of surprise bills that are large coming in and out because you're, if you don't get them approved, you don't have the funds to pay for them, they'll then be pushed to the next month. So it would probably be, you know, wise to have some type of, you know, policy going through on certain, you know, expenditures. Obviously, Tim would have to see him or Priscilla, whoever is, you know, we're working on the month by month budget, you know.
I thought, I thought, Kim, I thought you just said that when we do the month to month, there's the one twelfth, which is a given, and then there's things over that.
They say it's a minimum one twelfth. Again, the full guideline hasn't gone out, so this is what everybody's talking, it's minimum, every thought one twelfth, it's a minimum one twelfth and it's not a one twelfth of everybody's budget. So you would take your prior year operating budget and you'd say one twelfth, okay, can we get by on that for the month? No, if we, if we can, then yes, we go with that amount. But if you can't, you would include in debt in certain other, you know, higher payments on it.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Aaron, on the state side, we do this all the time. So the one twelfth budget is based on your cash flow the prior year and it only becomes more than one twelfth. Like Kim said, is if you have like a lumpy payment like debt service or some sort of social benefit that happens that month, that has to go out. So otherwise, it gives you more control over your budget. You could decide not to spend one twelfth.
Right.
And way below one twelfth, but they'll, they'll only allow you to go to one twelfth. So it'll be one twelfth of last year's budget plus anything sort of extra that you have to pay like debt service. Or on the state side would be like local aid goes out quarterly. The state has to pay that, so, so it, it's a, it's a much tighter control. And I agree with Scott, ironically, I think based on, you won't have warrants. There's a, a real scenario here that you will end up, even with what you consider a cut budget in June, end up spending more money than what you would have spent under a one twelfth. So I agree with you, Scott, on that.
I see that Wayne has joined us. Are there any people that have questions about, or what do we, what? Wayne, do you need to be brought up to speed as to what we're discussing here?
It's pretty obvious what you're discussing. And I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I had an annual meeting of some, of another organization I'm running that was scheduled twelve months ago and I had, had the chair of that, so sorry about that.
No need to apologize.
No need to update me in real time unless you want to ask me a question that I need to know what you were previously talking about in order to give you an intelligent answer.
Scott had, wants to say something.
I have a question. Understanding that we don't know what the potential town meeting format would be, but if we were in a scenario where we couldn't complete the town meeting for a variety of reasons, whether it's continued multiple nights, it's whatever, what would happen if, if we weren't able to close town meeting and, and we weren't able to reconvene town meeting? Could we then fall back on the one twelfth budget? I just have a concern of, given all the unknowns, if we're not able to complete the town meeting, what would happen?
My understanding is that if, it, it's simply what you were just discussing, if for whatever reason you don't have an approved budget, you fall back on the one twelfth.
And if you don't have a one twelfth approved, you do not spend any money on July one.
Can you, can you submit a one twelfth and have a, and approve a town meeting budget? Like you, can you hedge your bets?
That's what I was talking to Amy about before, is what's the actual dead on date? And if we think we're going to go through the town meeting, I'd still find out what the last date is that we'd have to submit a one twelfth and do it anyway. And then if for some reason, town meeting didn't go through, you didn't get a quorum, you would have the one twelfth to fall back on.
Yeah, then Wayne, but some of the other conversation was about, let's say we, we had a, you know, FY twenty one budget that we wanted to have on the town warrant in June excluding the high school. And it included some cuts that were likely to be controversial and so therefore you'd have a big turnout at town meeting. What, you know, what's the ability, what's your sense at this point of the ability to have that and have it both be an opportunity for people to participate, but also done safely?
It really, really depends on how, how, how large you think it, it might be. You know, I, I, I think, you know, doing it on the plaza, the, the police chief's preliminary calculations were that you could safely fit. preliminary calculations were that you could safely fit probably 200 people or so. If you, if you expected that we were going to get four or 500 people, then, you know, I think you need to plan on doing it. Either, either of two ways of doing it. One would be to move to Spalding and get a concert-grade PA system, or a local broadcast, or something like that. Or alternatively, you'd have to move inside the school, and we'd go to the approach of, of having to basically use Zoom in a bunch of classrooms and have four or five people in each classroom. But even then, I think if you're just talking four or 500 people, I think that would overwhelm our ability to hold that. So I don't have a good answer for you, I'm afraid.
Anybody from the board or FinCom have any more questions for one or another? Comments, ideas? Well, I think, sorry?
I think the other thing that comes into consideration, Kate, and I think you're aware of this as well, is like, we're going to be meeting with Concord around, essentially, essentially the Board of Selective Finance from both, both towns. In part, if I remember correctly, they, they have only postponed their town meeting by a month with the hopes that, or potential of extending it further into the fall. I think part of this, too, with the regional budget, is, you know, if we do not, you know, put a regional budget number in there, it doesn't make sense to put it in there, because at this point, there, there isn't a whole lot of information you have around that. Once they, there's certain scenarios in terms of if they go and have a town meeting approved, we need to, we need to institute a, a town meeting to be able to to also review and approve. And I think there's different scenarios in terms of how that would work. So I think that's another thing to just kind of put in there. There is a meeting coming in, I think, was it Wednesday? I can't remember which day it was.
Thursday. Thursday.
That we're going to be meeting with, with Concord. But that was one of the, on my next slide, was some things that are going to happen in the next, next week or so, around that.
Yes. Everybody looks so happy.
I'll just add, add one more uncertainty, which just comes under the aid, the category of government aid. You know, in the Great Recession, there was also federal aid, and one would have thought we would have more information on that by now, but that's, you know, another unknown.
My understanding, too, and Aaron can jump in, is there's a lot more, there's a lot of different pockets of money, like four different pockets with the CARES Act, and they really haven't necessarily, like, there, there possibly could be separate money for, like, the schools and education and stuff like that to help with this, but that's still an unknown right now. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you. I, unfortunately, not up to speed on that one.
The, the last one that, yeah, I understood is that, so there's, so they want it, like, we have our pocket of money, and then the schools are gonna, you know, they're, they're still working it all down. They're also, right now, no money that towns can get. It's really for COVID-related expenses. They can't use it as like a revenue supplement, but there may be talk in some towns of that, that if they're, we don't use all the money, that could be the next phase or possibility. So this is all like an evolving kind of situation. Each day, we learn more and more guidance comes out. And, you know, for Nathan, this is basically a deficit spending. We do not have a budget, so we're doing deficit spending. And the select board has to approve the expenditures that we're going to put on a month-by-month basis to DOR. So you'll be able to review and, and, and look at that, and just, just let you know.
So I, I think we need to fish or cut bait here. And I think there were a couple of scenarios that I heard. One would be to have, to go continue planning our June 23 town meeting with a budget minus the high school, the regional budget. Another would be to have a town meeting with just the warrant articles that we think we want, that we need, because there's some things that, like tax relief in some of that. And a third is to not have a town meeting at all and push it past the summer. Did I capture the, kind of the three scenarios?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we could, if, if anybody is in favor of number three, no town meeting at all. Because I'm not.
Okay. So, well, okay, we can start with number three. Luke, you want to, I don't know, you have anything you'd like to add?
You know, I'm just looking through the, the warrant, right? And some of these articles, you know, like the authorization of Chapter 90 funds, and Article, that's Article 7, and Article 8, you know, Department revolving fund authorization, you know, like that sort of thing, you know, does that, not having a town meeting to vote on just some of this stuff, right? Does that completely eliminate our ability to spend those sorts of things, too?
The revolving funds, my understanding would go as they were from last year. You would be able to run those the same.
Yeah.
How about Chapter 90?
Chapter 90, you wouldn't accept it, so unless you wanted to use it for a road thing, which, you know, that, unless you had a project that was pending it, you would just have whatever Chapter 90 money you had prior to.
You already have. Yeah. You know, it's, it's a tough one, because, yeah, you know, I mean, who knows if we're going to be in better shape three months down the road, six months down the road, you know, and, and it's hard to spend money you don't know you're going to get. Especially if you don't get it, right?
I under, from what I understand, and again, the FinCom can correct me, it's not that we don't know if we'll be in better shape, we don't know if we'll be in worse shape.
Yeah, no, I know, and I, and I get that. But, but no, I'm just saying, even to have a town meeting in general, right? And I'm, I'm not even thinking from a financial standpoint.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
No, no, but that's fine. But, but, you know, and then also, too, you know, I, I know, Kim, that you said, you know, we're a million bucks behind, per se, from 250 taxpayers, right? And, you know, the, the unfortunate thing is we don't know if that's real or not. You know, I mean, how many of those 250 aren't going to pay come July 1, because they just can't, right? And how many people are just holding off, right?
Right. That, that's the thing with you, you'll, you won't know your true revenue and all that till July 1. If, if, if it was extended to June 1, I could tell you June 2 and 3, what that number is. That number, you're not going to know until. We're not in a bad place. But yes, if nobody paid it, we could be out that million dollars.
Right, right. And that's a, that's a pretty tough hit for our town. You know, some of the things, though, that, you know, like, like a 2% coal, right? You know, are there certain things that we could make retroactive, right? We don't necessarily implement the coal right now.
Correct. You could do it in September and start it from that date forward, or you could do it in September and do retro back to July 1.
Right. So, you know, I mean, I, are there, you know, I'm just trying to think, you know, are there things that, you know, we can do now to cut some costs, that maybe we can vote to vote back in later on? And does it make sense to have a town meeting to do those sorts of things? I just, you know, I, I, I kind of have to, you know, default to FinCom, or you guys know a hell of a lot more about finances and that sort of thing than I do. But, you know, kind of what, what Jim and Nathan were saying, I, you know, I hate pushing everything down the road if we don't have to. But, but yeah, I, I, I don't know.
Well, I, I was certainly leaning toward an early town, you know, our scheduled town meeting. I've, I've pretty much changed my mind at this point. I like to make decisions based on information, and we'll have a lot more information in a few months than we have now, and can make much more reasonable and informed decisions at that time, without doing anything draconian in the meantime. By using the 1/12 budget, we essentially do a status quo, and, and we'll, we can, we can make whatever adjustments we need to make with a lot better information in a couple of months.
So I would like to ask you, Alan, within, so I'm, I'm hearing that you're saying, don't pass a budget. What about a town meeting with other articles? That, you know, that we might not want to put off?
That's, that's, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I mean, to me, the key here in any town meeting is the budget. It's, it's the most important thing we do, obviously.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to keep, you know, all the,
Yep, yeah, we can, we can do, we can do all kinds of, of things that don't affect very much. And if you want to have, we want to have a meeting to do that, that's fine. I'm not sure whether you want to go through all that trouble or not, just to do that.
Is it, yeah. Nathan, I'm going to come back, circle back to you, if you don't mind.
I, I, I think I still feel the same way.
That you, the same way, you want to vote a budget and the, and the articles?
Yeah.
So we have no, and, okay.
Wendy, get around to it. I'm not sure if you can see his video, but David Friedman keeps raising his hand.
Okay, he's not on my screen.
That's what I thought I'd pointed out.
Okay, thank you.
And can I just,
Let me, let me finish this polling first. Yeah, Barney?
So I, um, I, I definitely would like to see us hold a town meeting and consider the warrant, some of the warrant articles that are not the operating budget. I think there's important pieces on there, and if we think we can do it safely, that we should. I guess I'm, I'm, I'm leaning more toward the 1/12 budget, based on some of the comments that Aaron and others have made. If, if it's really the case that we can, that we have the ability to more closely control our budget, if we're doing a 1/12 budget.
Okay. Oh. Luke just left the room, so I can't ask him. There he is.
I have kids making weird noises in the background. You know, I don't know what, what the hell they do on Tuesday nights, what they eat, or what they drink. I don't, but yeah, it seems like I get on this call and all hell breaks loose.
Yeah, well, you know, they can.
Yeah, no, so, so kind of what, what both Alan and Barney just said, you know, I, I, I do think we should move forward with some of these, you know, maybe hold off on the budget piece. You know, because, yeah, there are, there are certain things that I think we can just get out of the way. So, yeah, I, I'm in the same boat. I think we should do something. You know, maybe go towards that 1/12 budget. You know, I, I still want to think about that more. I don't, I don't know. And also, too, I think, you know, we'll see what, what, or how the Concord, Carlisle, you know, FinCom meeting goes, right? And, and, you know, see what we can learn from that. But, but yeah, I do think we should try to do something if we can.
So something about the articles?
Yeah.
But I, I just need to be clear about what you think, you're total, did you say you're leaning towards the 1/12?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so that was everybody, and that leaves me. And I think I'm also leaning towards the 1/12 and, and doing articles. So sort of a hybrid town meeting, or I don't know what you'll call it.
Modified.
Modified town meeting.
Can I just process a question? I think with regard to the 1/12 versus a operating budget, I do think if we're going to present an operating budget at a town meeting in June, we do need to finalize it in the next week or so, to be able to get it into the warrant book, to be able to set the public hearing, so.
Yeah, I agree. That's why I'm trying to get this decided tonight for you guys.
I think that's unlikely, Scott, though, because I'm the only one pushing for it.
Yeah, but, okay, so at this point, let me just recognize David Friedman for his pearls of wisdom. David, you are mute, so.
Kim, could you unmute him? There you go.
There you go, okay.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, don't promise pearls of wisdom, but Tim Goddard, at the very beginning, made a comment that, you know, if you're going to go to the trouble of having a town meeting, you know, you might as well get as much done as you can. While I see the point to that, I think the other side of that, from the safety standpoint, is the shorter time everybody has to be together, the safer people will feel, and therefore the less likely you may be disenfranchising people who would feel uncomfortable being wherever it's going to be for three hours, whereas if you can, if you don't have a budget and can keep it as lean and mean as you can, with everybody understanding that the big budget decisions are going to be made whenever that happens to be, and I don't think you're going to be guaranteeing a date, but, you know, sometime in the next six months, that, you know, if you can get everything done in an hour, there's enough, there are a few things that are really, really important, that I think it's still worth going to that effort, and may, in fact, be more, make a lot more people more comfortable.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the only other thing I wanted to say, just, you know, I don't know if and when we're going to get into specifics, but just to be clear, and I've sent this out, and I think you've all seen this, but if we don't have a meeting and don't approve the additional funding for complete streets, we're essentially deciding not to do complete streets in terms of what's planned now, because it can't happen without an approval of funding on June 23, unless people are comfortable with, and, and we'd have to work this out with Gary, but comfortable with using Chapter 90 funds that Gary does have to finish it up. But just for those who had voted for no town meeting, that's essentially a vote to kill the complete streets project.
Yeah, nobody, I think nobody voted for no town meeting. They just voted for not, no budget at the town meeting, as far as I understood, among the selectmen.
Yeah, no, I was commenting on some of the FinCom.
Okay. Well, again, I don't think FinCom were, yeah. I think FinCom were voting on when to pass a budget, not on making a comment on town meeting. Yeah. Okay. Um, I think we should vote, have a motion and a vote so that the FinCom is on real stable ground for not presenting a budget at town meeting. And for, you know, unless you think we want to go through the warrant articles first, but it's as much, I'd, I'd like to, you know, there's so much uncertainty, just like, the reason I would like to go for a motion is so that everybody kind of can feel certain about one thing, at least. And I may be just grasping at straws, but, and if you guys don't agree with me, that's fine. But I think it would be nice if we just codified this and made it really clear what the plan is. And from what I understand is, we plan to have a town meeting on June 23 outdoors, and the, and we will deal with all the warrant articles that are, that we can deal with. But we will not pass an operating budget at that time, because of the uncertainties of the, you know, we can pin it on the regional school if you want, that, that, you know, and the fact that Concord is having their, their town meeting later. But I think we have to just come to a, a decision and go forward so that, you know, we're not jerking everybody around. Wayne?
So, yes, so not the, the main aspect of budget or no, no budget, but just if you do want to proceed on June 23 and outside, my advisory committee thinks that, you know, sort of late June, when you've got possibility of thunder showers and also mosquitoes, thinks it would be wiser to have it earlier in the day, so, you know, potentially on a Saturday, 10 o'clock in the morning, or 4 o'clock, if you want to keep it on the 23rd, 4 o'clock in the afternoon. 10 o'clock in the morning, or 4 o'clock, if you want to keep it on the 23rd, 4 o'clock in the afternoon, or something like that, so just one minor thing to, to think about, that, that's just separate from your main concern here, but don't ignore it.
Okay, no, it's, that's very important, because I'd like to set a date. I think that actually it helps that the FinCom are no longer under pressure to get something all, you know, tied up and wrapped with a bow for a certain date, you know, in June, so we could do it even the weekend before the 23rd. You know, we can push it forward to the Saturday, which is, I'm looking, going to
The 20th, June 20th, the day summer begins.
Yeah, there you go. How appropriate is that?
All right, well, um, why don't I make a motion?
Oh, uh, excuse me, but there's old, I have Old Home Day on my, my calendar.
And that's been, that's been canceled, is my understanding.
Has it been canceled?
Yeah, isn't that, Tim?
Yeah, okay, so, uh, we'll just replace it with the new town meeting day on Saturday at, okay, Saturday, the 20th. And what time do we want to do? Do we want to?
Let's, can we deal with the, the date and the time separate from the question of, of, you know, what kind of town, the motion to vote on a town meeting?
Sure.
Okay, just because I, let's get it done.
Fine.
So I, uh, I make a motion that, um, we, um, we hold a town meeting in June, at which time we will consider, um, the, the warrant articles that are not the operating budget. And those warrant articles, which warrant articles will be determined by a future discussion, a subsequent discussion.
Well, we have to, we, we have to do it by March 26th, right?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we, tonight, we're just going to
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, tonight's just the, the motion about holding a town meeting, and if so, what will be considered on the town?
Right, okay, but I'm just letting you, yeah, okay.
Okay, so, um, let me see if I can say that more clearly. So, um, I moved that we hold a town meeting in June of 2020. And at, at which time we will consider the warrant articles that we will choose to put on the town meeting exclusive of an operating budget for FY '21.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, that was, the motion was made by Barney, and the second is Luke's, uh, Luke Ascalillo. We'll have a roll call vote. Barney?
Arnold, I.
Ascalillo, I.
This is kind of odd, because I want to have a town meeting, but I don't want to have the operating thing, so I think I'm going to have to vote I.
You, you don't want, oh, I, I see, yeah, you want the, because we, yeah, okay. We die.
Louis, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alan.
That's all right. We already had repos.
All right, so we will have a town meeting at which certain warrant articles will be presented, but not an operating budget. Okay.
FinCom, you are reprieved.
Reprieved.
Not relieved.
So we have, yeah.
Thank you for all your work. I mean, I know how many hours you've spent at this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but.
A lot in the last two weeks.
It has been, it has been, but it's been good. I think it's, it's been good discussions, and, uh, tonight was reflective of the discussion we had last Thursday, which was, you know, it is an involved discussion around this decision, even from the financial standpoint. So I think we saw that here tonight, and, and FinCom isn't taking a vacation. We will be meeting on Thursday, because there are items that we need to kind of, kind of continue forward and have some discussions about. So definitely appreciate the time and the good discussion that we had this evening.
Now, um, are, are we going to go ahead tonight and review the warrant articles?
It's not on our, um,
No.
Agenda. I think it'll be on our next agenda, however, at this point, because now it's become way more, um,
Yeah.
urgent, and we need to get the warrant out to people, and I think we need to write a cover letter so that it gets August explained when it gets sent to the people.
It is on our agenda, though.
It is?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah. 7:30.
Well, that's this meeting.
Yeah.
The, uh, the warrant is, a review of the warrant is not on, oh, there it is, okay, yes, it is. Okay, well, we can do it tonight.
I just wondered if the, I mean, I know on some of them, you know, there is a, um, an opinion or a, a vote from the FinCom, but on others of those warrant articles that may be financial, there's not. I believe, at some point, it would, it would be good to hear from the FinCom about the money related ones.
That's right. We did want to do it tonight, that, uh, because we did want the FinCom here to opine about the, um, the moneyed ones.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Do we need to circle back first, though, and talk about the date of the town meeting, or you want to save that for later, or next?
The reason, um, it's important to have a date is because that date, it becomes the tail wagging the dog for a number of things in terms of the, the warrant. Is that correct, Tim?
Well, it, uh, we, we had planned that the May 26th meeting would be the, the meeting that the warrant was finalized, and, and the date. I guess in theory, you don't have need to know the date until next Tuesday, so Wayne's committee could meet later in the week, and if their recommendation is the 20th or something else, you could, you could add that, uh, to, you know, the warrant at that time. So I don't know if picking a date tonight that might have to change by next Tuesday, whether that, that's a good use of time or not.
No, okay, so what we need from Wayne's group, Wayne, if you would come with a recommendation next Tuesday as to date and time and place, that would be helpful for us.
Okay.
We should just quickly go through the articles so that there can be a more updated draft.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. I'm going to put mine, uh, should I, uh?
Can you pull it up?
I can put it on the screen if you, uh, well, Tim, could you put it on your screen? You're the host, so you could. I mean, I have them on my desktop, so if you wanted, allow me to. You want to give me permission to share my screen?
If you, if you can do it quicker.
Yeah, mine are already up on my, my desktop, so I can
I'll make you the co-host as well.
Okay. You can just, actually, the other possible ability is you just allow me, you know, give me permission to share screen.
I think you should be able to do it now.
Okay. Desktop. Let me see, that's it. Can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to roll down. Okay, there's the greetings, the consent agenda. I, I think we could, um, and Wayne, maybe we need to get rid of the consent agenda for this meeting.
I don't know, it usually was
Actually, I, I guess what I would say is, you know, you, we can put in as many things on the consent agenda as you think can would actually be non-controversial and finish them up.
Okay, all right, so we leave it in, and we, uh, and on the consent agenda, we have Article 2, which is town reports. Article 3, salaries of elected officials, we'll leave that in there.
Yeah.
Article 4, actuarial valuation of post-employment benefits. Five is revaluation. Six, real estate tax exemption. Seven, Chapter 90 authorization. Okay, eight, department revolving funds, nine, PEG. 10, fiscal year budget transfers. Are we going to have those?
I think that we will.
Okay, so we will leave that on, and so then it will not include Article 11, because we're not going to have Article 11.
Correct.
Okay, so that gets struck out. Article 12. Ah, okay, that was not on the consent agenda. So that's, that, so the consent agenda stays as was up through Article 10.
So the, the only thing I would add is that you're certainly free, as you go through the subsequent articles, if there is anything that you feel is genuinely non-controversial.
We can throw those in.
Hadn't prior years included in the consent agenda, if you want to include it in the consent agenda this, this year, you're certainly welcome to do so, and, um, you know, if, if someone voter objects to that, then they can say so, and it gets pulled out, so it's
Okay.
Sort, you, you don't have to feel like you're being too dictatorial if you put more things in the, the consent agenda, because it's easy for someone to upset it if they think it's not appropriate.
Okay, so now, uh, we have, uh, there's one of two ways we can work here. We can step through these articles one at a time, which is probably the way I would prefer. Talk about each one and decide, and then as part of the discussion, whether they go into the consent on the warrant to begin with, and, or in the consent agenda. So Article 12 is one such of those articles. Is it going to be on the warrant at all?
I don't think we should.
I, I would like also to poll the FinCom, uh, what their feeling is about.
Well, this is the one that's contingent on the grant.
Right.
The receipt of the Concord Carlisle Community Chest grant, which, um, you know, I, I think we should, they, they will know, at least according to the conversation I heard, what was that, a couple days ago, with, with Joan, and, um, anyways, that they should hear from the community chest fairly soon.
And they did hear that they're going to get money, but they don't know, they don't know whether this was part of it or not, as of this morning.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I have to say, um, I'm wondering if some of this could also be reimbursed by, um, this position could be reimbursed by the COVID monies. Because a lot of the need right now, we have, um, there's a great deal of pressure on COA, and they really are using a lot more of their current social, part-time social worker because of, of, of the COVID. I, I'm, I guess I'm loath to take this off, especially if they get the $10,000. Sorry, that costs us $10,000, still costs us $10,000.
It's more like 50 from the community chest.
And, and they, they would be getting 50s, so we would be throwing in 10. I think that was a pretty good match, and I would hate for them not to be able to get this position.
50 for this position.
No, no.
No, yes, 50 that they get total, you're right.
Right. And they don't know what they're going to get total just yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, no, just my opinion on this is, I, you know, I think we need this position now kind of more than, more than ever, and, and, um, you know, we'll see, and if they don't get the funding, they don't get the funding. But I do think it's something that we, we push for reimbursement for after, but I did, I just don't know if we already appropriate the funds, you know, and vote them in, how does that work, you know, so maybe that's something we need to figure out before we actually make a decision on this. You know, because if, if we're, you know, if we're basically saying, you know, we're going to fund the position, can we get reimbursed for it later, or would we be, be better off not funding it through a warrant article, you know, much like the gatekeeper? You know, say, say we're going to get the position, right, hire somebody for that position temporarily, and, and see if we can get reimbursed for it later, you know? I just, I, I just don't know enough about reimbursement.
The only downside of that is they would lose the chamber, the, uh, community chest money.
Yeah, it's just, but if we got reimbursed for it, then, then it goes back to community chest, right, so, um, yeah. So maybe just, I mean, we need to do a bit more homework on that, so, before next week.
I'm not clear whether you're, are you saying leave it on, Luke?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you know, do we, what, I wouldn't include it in, in the consent piece, but, um, but, but if we're, are we going to vote on it? I, I thought we were voting on everything next week, right, so, so we could take a week to find out, you know, if, if we do vote it on, you know, into the warrant, and it passes the warrant, does that eliminate our ability to get the funds back later? As opposed to like with the gatekeeper position where we just hire it, hire that position, and then apply for the reimbursement later? You know, that, that, that would be my only concern, is if it's, you know, it'd be like, it's somebody who's already in the operating, but trying to get reimbursed for it.
As I understand the CARES Act, it would be, this one would be somewhat questionable, you get reimbursed for if you voted in a town meeting.
Right, well, that's, yeah.
Great. I, I'm actually starting to think, uh, we don't put it on the warrant, and we do hire the position, because we really do need it. We try for the, um, the reimbursement, and we can always put it on a later town meeting.
Right, I agree.
So, um,
And what happens to the community chest, uh, grant? If it includes funding for this position, you lose that portion?
Well, I Come up with the 10 grand.
No, but I, I, I think we would just, I, I think we would just say to them, look at, you know, we're, we're trying to get funds for the CARES Act. If we do, then you can have the, the funds back, right? I mean, I think they take them back. So, so that's just it, and, you know, it, it, you know, if we can get the CARES Act money, then it's kind of a win-win for everybody.
Yes.
Okay.
If we can't, then, yeah, then it's kind of a big hit, but.
All right, so we're not, certainly not putting it in the consent agenda, and there is, we would need to talk to COA, and I think we should do that soon.
If they get confirmed this week, we can, we can take it off by next week.
Right.
Exactly.
Article 13, special appropriations. Are these, let me see. What do we want to do with that? These are things we really need to do.
And we do them almost every year.
And we do them every year, so maybe this should, this could go on the consent agenda.
Although the, the Council on Aging position, I mean, I'm very supportive of it, but it may make, you know, draw some questions if we're trying to, you know, tighten our budget, tighten our belts.
Why do we always do the, why is this always outside of the budgets?
I'm not, not 100% sure. I think the consulting for the finance department is, is so that it, uh, to call it out separately, and so that it doesn't just become part of their operating budgets.
It's also shared, so I don't think it's defined on one department of the other.
Right.
Department, one year, the accountant might use all three, and the treasurer five, or vice versa, or split.
Yeah.
It's also taken care of, or?
Yeah, it doesn't close.
Yeah, right. And this is the other social worker position with the COAs, not the
Right.
Wouldn't, wouldn't fund the new one, in any way.
Right. At, we, we certainly can't take that position away. We need that.
They're already paying that, that, they've already increased by 50% that position out of grant money.
Yeah.
The other thing I would say is if we really wanted to tighten belts, would it be to lose the map updates? I don't think that's going to kill us between now and fall.
It's a reval year, so I don't know, Priscilla, how much do you have for that, if they continue with a reval year? Or is it just the maps?
And this, this is not updating them to, to go, um, get anything, uh, you know, online. This is, this is
It can't be, because it's been in the budget for years.
It's just updating
It's just updating the printed maps. It's the cost of
Yeah.
Well, updated and the cost of printing.
Okay. Okay, so we didn't hear from Priscilla. Was she muted or?
No, no, David was right. It's the maps, it's not the reval.
Okay, okay. So we need to have those. Is that correct? So we cannot lose those.
Well, I, you know, theoretically, you work on the previous year's maps for another year. I mean, they're, they're reference documents. You'd have to check with the assessors. If if you could postpone doing the annual update and make it not till the following year, I'm not sure that the world comes to an end. I don't know, the assessors don't rely on it for anything related to tax assessment, I don't think. It's, it's just a useful reference document.
Could go into the fall meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it became critical, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so let's move that to the fall meeting. Treasurer, accountant. 3,500. Is there any wiggle room in that? And do you need it right away?
It could go to the fall.
It could go to the fall.
Okay, so can, I think the only thing left in that is Council on Aging.
Yes.
Okay. Let's, and then we have to keep that. All right, Article 14, we stuck.
And then 15 is Complete Streets.
15 is Complete Streets. If we, if, oh. Well, let me ask you this, guys. You complete street guys. If this gets voted down, does that mean we cannot do the Complete Streets at all?
Unless, yeah, I would say yes, because if you put this out there and people say they don't want to do it for this money, for additional money, I don't think it would be appropriate to use Chapter 90 funds. I, I think we can make a pretty good case and but either way, I mean, if you don't put it forward, it doesn't get done. So we
Well, I, well, I'm just, that's what I was going to ask. If we don't put it forward and we did have Chapter 90 funds in the bank that could be used for this, and maybe we could pare it down just a little so that, you know, fits within the 250 and the, and whatever, and the 50 and the Chapter 90 funds. We could do it and not have to ask.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it would be inappropriate not to ask because we did ask and told people it was going to cost X and it's now like 2X. And so I think we need to ask, and I think we just need to make the case. And I don't think it would be a good idea to try to work around it. And there's not really anything significant that can be cut because of the way the grant and the bid process has gone. The amount and the work pretty much has to be what it is. And that'll be part of what we'll have to explain. And we'll do what we can to make the presentation as clear as possible and get information out ahead of time. And I can work with Luke and Tim and maybe we do a mailing or something.
I mean, I would agree with that completely. I think if the town doesn't want to spend the money, we shouldn't be spending the money.
Okay.
This is the opportunity for them to speak up.
Right.
Technical question here for Kim. Would this qualify as a capital project?
The Complete Street one?
Capital projects aren't allowed in the 112th.
No, correct, the cap, any capital projects are not considered the 112th. So if you don't vote them here, they, nothing can be done in the 112th budget. Because it's based on your FY '20 operating.
And just on the question of whether this can be, the, the amount requested can be reduced. What if the, the East Street portion, which my understanding is that was going to be covered, a lot of that was going to be covered by Chapter 90 funds. If if that were eliminated from this project with the possibility that it could be done out of the Chapter 90 funds, how much of a reduction would that allow in terms of what would be asked of town meeting?
It's hard to quantify, but, and Tim can correct me if I'm wrong. I checked with Tim on this. Basically, again, because of the way the bid product, process was done and that we've already granted the bid, it's for a very specific state bid amount of work. And the selectmen have already approved the contract and we cannot change it. It also is part of the East Street work. The way the state did the grant didn't entirely make sense, but they gave grant money for part of the East Street work, all of the sidewalk work, but not another part of it. So it's impossible to break out some and and still get the grant. It's just not possible.
Is that, is that something we've, we've checked with Council on?
Tim can speak to it perhaps.
Well, Council drafted the contract that Allied Paving agreed to. And Council agrees that we bid a fixed scope of work for a fixed amount of funding. I don't know, you know, if it to to change the scope before the project begins. I, I don't know if that's fair to the contractor. That, you know, they bid on a certain amount of work and to, you know, tell them at the last minute, it's not this amount of work. I don't know if that's
Probably have to go out to bid again.
Yeah, I think exactly.
What if, what if you did it differently? What if you, what if town meeting, you know, we, we request a smaller amount? And that's the amount that that is going to be allocated toward this project out of town funds, out of this, based on this article. But it doesn't necessarily mean we're asking them to change of the scope of work. We're just going to find a different source of funds for the remainder.
Well, we already found the, the, all the funds that we can from Chapter 90 funds are already part of this. And we'll have to, we're going to explain that to town meeting. But it, it's, it's, it's totally not feasible. It just, it, we did talk to town council about, you know, whether we could question any item on the bid. And they said, no, you can't. It's a complete package. You're accepting the full package and that's one of the requirements of how states work.
So I
I understand the motivation behind it, but it, it can't be done.
Because I, I just think that, well, I'll just say the obvious that, you know, I think from a from the standpoint of, of having more support for this project, but also recognizing that we're in a very different environment than we were in when we originally, you know, that when the town originally began supporting this project, that it would be preferable to be asking for less. And I, I understand, I hear what you're saying. I, I do want to raise then another question about it, which is, I thought that at the Board of Selectmen meeting where we first started discussing this post-COVID, that we had a discussion about not signing the contract until we had resolved some of this. So did I miss something? Or did the board not actually take a vote to authorize the contract, but we went ahead and did it anyway?
You, you, you voted to award the contract to Allied Paving. The contract was, has not been signed by the board. The contract has contingency language that predicated on the town meeting vote being successful and the final piece of funding being in place. So you could sign the contract today, but it's, you know, contingent on the town meeting vote, so we
I, I understand, okay. So that was my misunderstanding. And the, the contingency on the town meeting vote, does it specify the amount that we would have to authorize? That we have to vote in favor of?
It's just the total amount of the contract. Yeah, no, it doesn't, it doesn't specify that. I mean, I think that, thinking that Chapter 90 funds are different from the funds that we appropriated town meeting doesn't really help sell this. And I think that we need to do a good job of explaining why it costs what it costs and that, you know, we didn't, there was no explanation. And and I wasn't part of the we at the time. But when this was presented last year at town meeting, there was no explanation or no anticipation of using Chapter 90 funds. It hadn't been thought through, it hadn't been bid. We didn't have full information. Now we do, we're going to present a complete case for it. And it, you know, it's the fact that it's on this warrant, given our concerns about everything else, is a is what it is. And it, and it relates to the grant that will go away and the, the importance of this to the, to the town. And I, I actually think it's better to ask for the 150 than it is to try to get more money from, take more money out of the Chapter 90. Because that hadn't even been made aware to town meeting previously. And I, and I, and the other part of it is, we will do what we can to keep the costs down. This, the budget includes a 10% contingency and we don't necessarily need to expend that. By the time we get to June, I believe that we will know whether we have reusable curbing from the school parking lot that I think is going to be taken apart by then. So we may be able to keep it down. But I, I actually think it's better to ask for the 150,000.
So, so on this contingency fund, now that's not something that's, that is part of the contract with Allied Paving, right? That's something that the town project manager controls, correct?
Right, yes, no, we, we are
Yeah, so, so how, so my understanding is the, the contingency amount is quite larger than some might have recommended. So is it, I'm just even thinking, even if you come in and say, you know, we had a contingency fund in here of X amount and we're going to reduce that by Y amount because we recognize that, you know, we're trying very hard to keep costs down. Is that something you could do if you chose to?
You, yes, you could do that if you chose to. And then, I mean, basically what we're trying to do is saying, you know,
I understand what contingency funds are for, I'm just
I understand that, I'm just saying, we, what we're trying to do is say, we came to you once before, we're coming to you again, and it's a much, much higher amounts. We want to make sure that we cover all possible contingencies. There's a, there's a high number in there. Chief Fisher did a sort of seat of the pants, you know, five-minute calculation for what the police detail would be. And so that's a much higher number. You know, we hope we don't need to spend that too. And I think the key is that we commit the Chapter 90 funds, the 200,000, Chapter 90 funds. And that any savings we have will come out of the tax part of it. So anything we don't spend in the contingency won't go into Chapter 90. All of it will come out of the amount appropriated. So we minimize the tax impact in terms of being able to give money back.
Well, gosh, I don't want to belabor this and I'm not hearing anybody else on the board jump in on it, but I'll just make one more comment, which is, I think I would really encourage another look at, at the amount that's being requested. And between now and next Tuesday's meeting, if there's a way to reduce the amount by looking at that contingency fund, and maybe it means instead of a back-of-the-envelope estimate, you know, there's a, there's a more thorough process for figuring that out. And whatever that contingency amount is, that's what you live with. That's what you stick to. So I've, I've said my piece.
Well, we, we will do that.
Any other board members have something want to weigh in with on this?
Well, it's, it's the kind of thing I think needs to go before the, before the town. I don't, I don't support the article, but it's, but it's a, I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting it on the warrant so the town gets to decide.
Okay. Nathan, anything? No, and Luke?
No, I think everybody knows where I stand.
Yeah, we do. Article 15 stays on this. It may get, hopefully, as per Barney's request, maybe the, the ask will be a little less, but we're going to move on to Article 16 for capital equipment. Are we going to leave any of this on?
So I'm on the, I'm the chair of long-term caps and we have a few committee members on here. I can just say, speaking in the FinCom departmental meetings, generally, these were the, these were the items that people were identifying as things to reduce their budgets. I think the most pressing item was the SCBA air compressor for the fire department. But even that one, I think, you know, we can certainly push till fall. And if there was some kind of critical failure unexpectedly, you know, there is the reserve fund that we have to replace equipment. So my personal view, not speaking for the committee, would be not to, not to include any of these items or this article at all.
Nathan, I'm sorry, didn't catch that.
I, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
I also agree.
I do too.
Yep.
Everybody agrees, all right. So that is off. Article 17, municipal facilities. I take it will also be off for all the same reasons.
I think so.
And I hear any dissent? Article 18 is already off. Article 19, I do not want to take off personally. I don't know. Kim? This is the capital stabilization fund.
You can hold off because if we're not going to fund it, it doesn't, you know, it's just setting it up so it's benign that way. You're not going to fund it.
The question is, are we not going to fund it? Why would we not fund it if we think we have some reserve?
Are you going to fund for capital or you're just going to fund a general stabilization fund? If you're going to fund for capital and use that as the expenditure serves for some of the other capital, then yes, put it on. I mean, I don't know how much controversy you're going to get on it. It, if you put it on, it's established and then you can fund it anytime. You can't fund it without, you know, putting it on. And if we're thinking of putting money in stabilization fund at this time, at this meeting, it would probably be a good idea to keep it. My, my question to Wayne is, is this considered a special town meeting? Or is this an annual without an operating budget? Because the concern is if we had a town meeting prior to June 30, our, our free cash would not carry over. I just want to find out if that's going to happen or not. Because if it doesn't, then we need to fund
Oh.
funds.
Yeah.
That, that's a great, that, that's a great question.
I've been chomping on it for a while.
I, that, that thought hadn't occurred to me. So I have, I have no idea. And I suspect that between your contacts at DOR and Town Council, you're in a much better position to get a good answer on that than I am.
Well, I don't think anybody's really doing this, so I'm not sure with the answer. I would be safe rather than sorry. And I would definitely put either an article or add an article to fund stabilization fund. And if you wanted to earmark part of it to capital for those articles that you do in the fall.
I don't think you want to market to capital though, right? I think
Well, if you earmarked capital, you could put like the 300,000, if that's what you planned on doing for like long-term caps and kind of putting that as a placeholder and doing everything else to stabilization. But I, I personally, but, you know, they can give you, DOR can tell you certain things, but we're so close and I wouldn't want this printed and to find out our free cash closes. I don't know how FinCom feels. I would, I would put some dry powder away. I would, I would, I would, probably in a regular stabilization fund, if you wanted to do a small amount in, in the capital or your long-term caps in the fall. But that's kind of, you know, you know, I mean, that could be like your placeholder for that if you're planning on going forward with them. My bigger concern is if free cash closes.
Yeah. I think, what I would propose, since it's getting late, is you know, next Tuesday, hopefully, Kim, you can have the answers to those things and whether, you know, and what we should do with
No, I was planning on calling DOR, I was already with them today, tomorrow, so that I can talk to FinCom on, you know, Thursday about this. But you know, I don't know if it's precedented it's ever been done.
But we, we, we definitely want to have stabilization funds, would be my guess. And I think on Tuesday, maybe we could And I think on Tuesday, maybe we could hear the best way of dealing with that and then we should just move on.
I agree. The question, so the only other thing is, and we want to answer about this, is do we think this would be, not the funding of it, but this Article 19 itself, do we think that that would be controversial? Or can we put it in the consent agenda? It's sort of housekeeping and sort of.
I would.
Two-thirds vote, is that?
That's later.
No. You're just establishing the fund. If you vote money in, it's a majority in and a two-thirds out. It used to be two-thirds, two-thirds. It's changed. Majority in, two-thirds out. I don't know if it's a two-third vote to establish a fund. I'll have to check that. It says a two-third.
Yeah.
Oh, it does. Oh.
We're established.
But let's do what Nathan suggests. We'll come back to it next Tuesday.
Okay. Public safety communications equipment tower lease is off because it's not being done. CPA annual recommendations?
Yeah, those can probably go to the fall. There's nothing pressing.
Okay. That's mostly the transfers, motion to, okay, so they'll just go fall?
Yeah, I just, except for the budget piece, right? I mean, maybe, you know, Priscilla and Kim can weigh in on this. You know, do we have to actually appropriate the, make the appropriations?
Allocations, yeah.
Or allocations, I mean.
Well, you are required every year to do, you know, the allocations and put the, you know, put it in the reserves.
Yeah.
But it could be done in the fall.
You could probably do it in the fall. It would be, because you're not really spent out, but you'd have to make sure you reserve that 10%. If you're not going to do any CPA articles, I think you could hold off on.
Okay.
All right. 22 Cranberry Bog is off. Increase income link. Okay, so this is 23 is something I think we wanted to keep. Nathan? This was one that you were talking about.
I would like to keep it.
I agree.
I agree.
All right. So we're keeping that. And we're keeping it as a separate article, not as a consent agenda article.
Correct.
All right. Home row petition for, yeah, that goes so fall or who knows when. Increased town moderators term to three years, same unless, Wayne, you want to do that this time around? Because this would not, I don't think this one would be controversial.
No. And it would shorten the caucus.
Yeah, let's wait.
But the caucus was so much fun. Sure. Whatever you want.
Leave it in?
Yeah.
Nathan, we have one in. Nathan, what about you?
I'm fine.
You're fine in. Luke?
Yeah, might as well leave it in.
In. Barney?
Yes, if we think it won't be controversial and.
No, this one definitely will not be controversial. So that, okay, so we'll leave that one in. Selectment to select board?
So the reason why I think we should leave that out is just because I'm assuming, are we going to have the handouts of what is being changed?
Yeah.
It could be complicated. It could be kind of complicated getting that all out and described to everybody.
To me, it's not, yeah.
Fall.
Fall. And wait, what was 26? Oh, that was, again, is the same thing, really.
Related, yeah.
27. Okay, we're done. I see David's hand up again.
Back to the Complete Streets, I have a question. Since the warrant, and if you go back to the article, but it doesn't specify the amount. It just says.
It doesn't.
And I believe you can close the warrant with that and the amount can be later. I just want to check and see if planning for this, whatever you're going to call it, meeting, if it's a, because we could perhaps get a little better handle on this. If Tim was able to schedule a meeting, we need to have some pre-construction meetings. And if we could arrange a pre-construction meeting with Allied Paving and with Chief Fisher, we might be able to get a better handle on how it's actually going to work. And therefore Chief Fisher might have a better handle on what he needs in terms of police details and we might have a better handle on what's likely to come up for contingency. If you don't have to know that by next Tuesday, because you've already agreed to have it in there and the warrant is what it is, if that's okay, then I would ask Tim to try to set that up as soon as we can. But it might be two meetings from now or three meetings from now before you would know what that dollar amount was, if that's okay.
You don't need the dollar amount until, you know, the motion that's read at town meeting, technically.
Yeah, I mean, we want to have.
Head of time?
Yes, we want to have as much time as we can, but if we're comfortable, you know, having it in three weeks instead of one, we could actually have some information. Otherwise, you know, I'm just trying to respond to Barney's request. Otherwise, we're going to be flying blind and it just makes it harder to spell.
Yeah, I think, Tim, as long as it meets, you know, the deadline for when things have to get printed and mailed out, that'd be fine.
Yeah, the warrant article is fine as it is.
Okay. So Tim, if you could reach out to Allied Paving and, you know, I can be available. I trust Luke can and Chief Fisher would be the main people, I think, for the most part.
Oh, boy. Okay. So, and I hate to bring this up, but Victor asked a question, which I think we need to have also clarity on because all of this, this entire thing might be moot. And his question is, given the legislation to help municipal government during the COVID situation, we're able to go to a 1/12 budget if we have a town meeting? If we don't have a town meeting? Okay. If we have a town meeting without a budget, though, it notes we can postpone town meeting beyond June 30 and as a result unable to approve budget, we can go to 1/12. But if we have town meeting without the budget, we're not postponing the meeting, only the budget discussion.
We can postpone the annual town meeting.
And make this a special.
A special.
Okay. So anyway, we do need to get clarity on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
A lot of this could all be knocked into a cocked hat.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else on the warrants, on the budgets? On this Gordian knot that we are trying to untangle? Okay.
All good.
I appreciate everybody coming tonight and all your time and effort in preparation for this. David, thanks for your insights on some of these things. We will get back to it on Tuesday, a week from Tuesday. I know you guys are going to talk again on Thursday. And on Thursday, we'll have some more information because we'll know more what Concord is doing and what some of the implications about that are for us. And hopefully also we'll have some more information about the special town meeting as opposed to a regular town meeting. Okay. Can I unshare my screen at this point?
Yep.
Yes.
Stop share. Great. Okay. I've lost my, oh, here it is. My agenda. We finalized. Does FinCon want to close their meeting? Or do you?
Yeah, I think we should be able to close the meeting after you've gone through the warrant.
I'll let you have air talk to do that.
Yep. If you wouldn't mind, someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
All right, roll call.
Attache to your eye. Tree alive.
Nick Maro, I.
Delia, I.
Pinsky, I.
James, you're muted.
I think I spoke over Scott. Yeah, attach your eye.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right, Liang, yes. Thank you again, guys.
Take care.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks, Kim.
We're at the town administrator's report.
Yes. Okay, just a few items in my report tonight. First item, with respect to the CARES Act funding. We found out last week that the town is eligible for up to $462,000 in coronavirus relief funding for eligible activities to be eligible. Basic criteria is it can't have been budgeted for. It has to be an unbudgeted expense related to the town's COVID response. So the departments are gathering their information on what they've expended to date. Police and Fire and the town and everyone else that has done, you know, something that's related. Priscilla is going to kind of cross-reference that with the expenses that she has pulled out over the past two, three months. And the first opportunity to submit for reimbursement, I think, is June the 5th. The program will reimburse through December 31st. So it's for funds expended to deal with COVID from the declaration of emergency in March through December. So we're certainly going to, you know, put in for the town share of those funds because we do have expenses obviously related to the pandemic.
So for example, actually, the COA has increased the hours of their current social worker, though they will probably have that on their list, for instance. Because we were talking, because that wasn't budgeted. And that was, a lot of it was COVID-related. No?
I don't think they'll have that on their list because they're using the state grant, which they have just been before June 30.
Yeah, and much of that has to do with the homeless person.
Yeah, I know. Well, okay. Yeah, but, yeah. It got worse because of the COVID, though, because they couldn't place the homeless person because of the home. Okay. All right.
Okay, item number two, I think Kim mentioned earlier tonight that we'll be asking the board to vote to authorize deficit spending related to COVID. We don't have a motion for you tonight. We'll have that for next Tuesday. And that's also a requirement from DLS that the town has to vote to authorize that deficit spending. The state has to approve it, but we have to submit for it. Item number three, attached to your packet, you have a request from the Chair of the Municipal Facilities Committee requesting permission to begin repairs on the DPW salt shed. He's looking for guidance in light of the current freeze on discretionary spending. So I told Jerry I would bring that to the board tonight. If you want to discuss that tonight or we can agenda that for the next meeting, but that is the request.
What is the board's feeling on that one? I can give you a brief update, I mean, background on that salt shed and.
What's the cost that we'd be authorizing?
$7,500 is what I recall.
Yes.
What happened is, you know, before all this, the salt shed's been falling, you know, been in bad repair. And so they stripped off some of the wood that was kind of, you know, peeling off already anyway. And they wanted to make sure the members were sound. They found that most of it's sound, but there's a bunch of broken rafters up at the top. And so basically they want to re-site the stuff that they peeled off in order to see inside. So they want to put that back and they want to fix the rafters. And because if they don't and they keep on loading too much salt and sand in the building, the building will collapse and it could collapse on somebody who was working in there. So we'd like to get it put back together.
So this is fixing the rafters, but also replacing what was taken off in order to check it?
Yeah. You know, without x-ray vision, you can't tell what's rotten and what's not inside for the, so they had to peel some of this plywood that was siding off in order to look in to see.
Can't be reused?
Well, it was in poor, they took off the pieces that were in poor condition.
Got you.
What does this actually get us in terms of lifespan? Or is it just so it doesn't collapse tomorrow?
Well, it's not going to collapse tomorrow, but the guys are kind of rough with the equipment in there, you know? And that's why we have the broken rafters to begin with. So we're concerned that they bump it another time, you know.
Are they going to be putting anything in there?
I mean, yeah. What do you mean?
Yeah, all that stuff, even the street sweepers been picking up is going in there.
Well, they have to empty it out for them to work, to do the work. So everything will be emptied out.
Yeah, but I mean, are we buying salt and sand now?
I don't believe we are now, but I don't know.
You're asking, Nathan, if there's a need for the shed?
I'm asking if the shed is going to be used over the next.
Oh, I see what you're asking.
Yeah, it's just an emergency.
Oh. No, I don't think it's an emergency.
Then it's discretionary.
Well, it's discretionary.
Yeah, you know, I was assuming that they, I assumed they still had salt and sand in there that they would have to take out. I had no idea they were putting street sweepings in there because that's not, I don't know what they do with that normally.
Well, I think they recycle it.
Oh, do they recycle it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, they have to, well, they'll want to have, they'll want that to be protected ultimately.
But if it's not an emergency and we're saying limiting discretionary spending, I mean, shouldn't we stay consistent?
That's why, exactly. That's why, you know, I told MFC they needed to come to us to have that cleared. I don't, you know, I can't really answer that whether it's an emergency. I don't think it's an emergency. However, you know, there's always the idea, the fact that it's now more open to the elements and it's going to not certainly do anything good for its condition. So.
Well, if it's going to, I mean, if it's going to cost more money than by not doing it than it will be if we do it, that's a difference. But that's the justification that needs to be made, I think. That it's an emergency and if we don't do it, the damage to be done in the meantime is going to more than offset the cost.
Yeah, and I can't ask that either.
Yeah, so if we could wait, you know, well, you know, through the summer because we're not going to need the solve. We're saying, then we do it then.
Okay.
I mean, I don't recall the justification, but we need a good justification.
I think Bill is, were you raising your hand, Bill? Or no? No.
No, Russell?
He's frozen.
Oh.
He's very still.
Oh, there he is.
Yep.
Okay. Well, yeah, he is frozen because, all right.
All right, moving on. Okay, is he trying to get back in?
Yeah.
Well, we could go on.
Go ahead.
Oh, there he is.
There he is. Okay. Did you want to say something, Bill?
Yeah, just a couple of things so you're aware. The ring around the base of the salt shed plywood that protects the structural members have been removed and it's been off now for over a month and a half or so. And to protect that structure from future life, if we want to last another 10 years or so, that ring of plywood needs to be put back. You are, if you delay it until the fall, you are putting that structure at risk because of the deterioration that has happened over the years because it's an older building. So that piece of it should be done, in my opinion. You know, the rafters or the relief trusses being repaired could be delayed, but we got a super price from the contractor to do it. So that would be my recommendation that it be done because it's going to cost us down the road if we don't do it. I know the town didn't want to, you know, purchase a new shed or replacement salt. I know the town didn't want to, you know, purchase a new shed or replacement salt shed. So we really need to preserve this one that we have. That was all I wanted to say.
That was helpful.
Then I would say as quick, it's an emergency.
That's what it sounds like to me, too. Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
And then the final item in my report is a request from.
Sorry, Tim, do we have to make a motion on the previous one or we can just say yes?
That.
On the salt shed?
I don't think we need a motion. We could make a motion if you want to, but I, you know.
No, I just wanted to make sure we weren't being expected to do that.
Yeah.
Fine. Sorry, Tim.
Nope, that's, that's quite all right. There's a request from the CCHS Parents Association to hang a banner across School Street in honor of the Class of 2020. And they're hanging a similar banner in Concord Center. And they'd like to put up this banner expressing congratulations to the Class of 2020 at CCHS.
I move that the Board of Selectmen permit the CCH Parents Association to hang a vinyl banner on School Street in honor of CCH Class of 2020, saying congratulations to CCHS Class of 2020, beginning tomorrow and going through middle of June, June 15.
Second.
Because there's not going to be an Old Home banner, right?
Nope.
No.
So that's not overlapping with the one we approved for Home, Old Home Day?
No.
There's nothing else that we've approved, right, Kim?
I don't think for that timeframe, no.
I mean, they don't have to have it up that whole time. They just have that timeframe to use.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
And then, sorry, do we need to vote?
Yes. Sorry. So we had a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, by roll call.
Arnold, I.
Oscar, a little I.
I don't know.
Louis, I.
Reed, I.
And then Kate, I see that Mary Lynn is.
Yeah, I was just going to say that. So, but let's, Tim, did you see the chat? Message?
Yep.
There's a message, a request, that there was a request about doing a tribute for Carlisle Collegiate graduates.
Mary Lynn's on the call. I mean, she's here if you want to hear from her.
Yeah, I see that, I see that the comment, I haven't had, Jen hasn't made me aware of that. So we can do that next week if that's, if that's all right.
Would that be sooner?
I think Annie, are you on the call for the same reason? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can it wait a week?
Annie, you are muted just a minute. You're still muted. I don't.
Tim, can you, or you're doing it?
I was double muted. Thank you. We have polled our 80, 75 to 80 collegiate graduates. So they are, you know, started in kindergarten and now they're graduated. We wanted to do a presentation of lawn signs on the green. And we had a tentative date of, that we wanted to propose to you of June 11th through June 15th.
And where did you want to put the signs?
Well, we wanted to place the signs socially distant on the green. They would be professionally done. They're 18 by 24 signs, double-sided, staked, very attractive. And, and we're getting artwork from each of the graduates' schools. And they will have just some simple artwork, the mascot, the school colors, the logo of the school, and the name of the graduate with congratulations. And because, you know, we're approaching the time when people might be having, you know, leaving for the summer, we wanted to make sure we did it before Father's Day, actually. So we have about 75, 80 graduates from Carlisle, and we've already done a survey. And we have response in five days from 40 families. So they are very interested. And we're going to keep the cost down. It's a very minimal cost. We're going to have them professionally done by, you know, a sign, a graphic artist and a sign maker.
What were the dates?
Well, we're tentatively wanted to propose June 11th, which is a Thursday, to June 15th, which is, we would collect them and distribute them on that following Monday. I mean, those dates aren't set in stone. We just need enough lead time to get the signs made.
And is there, is there, is there a particular organization that's requesting this?
It is not. We're just interested parents, and it's a very close-knit group. They're still friends, a lot of them. And a lot of them are here, and some of them will be traveling back here to participate. So we need to give them some lead time. It doesn't take a ton of time to do the signs. It takes some time to design the signs.
Will this affect the things that are already on the green?
Pardon?
Will this affect the things that are already on the green, like the poppies and all that kind of stuff?
Oh, not at all. Not at all. We would make sure that we kept everything distant. And also, we're going to work out a schedule because we have survey results with everybody's contact information, and we'll keep a schedule. So when families want to go there and take a picture with their lawn sign, we'll make sure they're socially distant and that they're on a schedule. And then we will set them up on that Wednesday, again, tentatively. And then we will make sure they're gone by, you know, we're thinking five days would give people enough time.
You think this, right, so this is collegiate graduates?
Collegiate graduates, right. And many of them have known each other since Red Balloon.
Do you think it might make high school graduates feel slighted if they're not included?
The high school has, we've already actually spoken with the principal. Mary Lynn has met with the principal. And we made sure that it was unique from theirs. So they're doing lawn signs, and they had a bus going through and sort of a couple of days ago. So their lawn signs are in front of their homes. And these lawn signs would have their names and would go to the parents. You know, the both parties, to answer your question, post-party, both parties are being left out, right? All these kids are being left out. So I think that the high schoolers, in my personal opinion, I think they'll get it. You know, college is a bigger deal than, you know, they've gone off, they've grown up, they're adults, and now they're.
I've got a senior. I'm not sure that I agree.
Senior in college? You have a senior in college?
In high school.
In high school. No, no, no. I mean, the, you know, the college graduates are a lot more mature. You know, there's still some work to be done. But, you know, to answer your question, I don't think they'll be, you know, they'll feel the way they feel. But I also think that it's something for them to work toward. You know, look at that. That is so cool. You know, I'm going to have an opportunity to graduate from college and have a family photo on the green.
Well, let's hope we don't have to do that in four years.
We may start a new tradition. Gold coming for collegiate graduates.
Mary Lynn had her hand up a while back. I don't know if she took it down or if it just kind of disappeared.
Mary Lynn, speak. Oh, she said, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't look at the bottom of the chat. She said she just emailed me the proposal and a copy of the sign.
Yeah. Can you, oh, put that up because she designed the sign for her son.
Okay, I, I can't, let's send it. I'll forward it to you, Kate, and you can share. Let me see if it's here yet.
It's terribly tasteful.
No, I'm sure it is.
Have you talked to FRS yet? Because they have to also sign off on the green.
Yes, yes, we will do that.
Of course. I, I don't see it here, Mary Lynn, but I'm sure it's, well, I'm.
I can go grab it, right. I have a copy of it downstairs.
My, my email has not been downloading very quickly these days. So anyway, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, though.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't think we need to see the signs. I'm super sure.
Do we need to make a motion for this one? Probably so, right?
We do.
Well, I can move that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Carlisle Parents of College Graduates to put up a family photo for each of the college graduates on the Town Common. Do you want the dates on there? I guess, yeah, for the period of
If it works.
For the period of June 11th through June 15th.
So there is an overlap because we were going to also ask you for a street banner across.
Which we just approved earlier for the.
I know.
Maybe you guys could work together.
Make a co-exist.
And this has to be contingent with FRS approval as well.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Shall we have a vote?
Arnold, I.
Oscar, a little I.
Brown.
Louis, I.
Reed, I. Okay. Knock yourselves out.
Thank you so much.
My, my son's getting his masters. Can he get in on this?
Sure. Well, tell him, send us his artwork. Is he graduating 2020?
Yeah, just finished his last, last week he put in his last, you know, project in.
Yeah, I don't know. Why not? More the merrier.
Okay, what else we got?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Upcoming meeting schedule?
Next Tuesday.
Well, in fact, it doesn't say next Tuesday, does it? Because next Tuesday, yeah, no, it is the 26th, next Tuesday.
Yes, it is.
Oh, my God.
And we've just said we would, yeah, there are a couple things, we're going to finalize the warrant, right?
Yep.
And we're going to discuss the date, the actual date of town meeting. Hopefully Wayne will come in with a recommendation.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I think we got pretty far on that warrant. There's not very much left for us to have to do, right? So.
You'll probably also have a recommendation from the Election Committee.
That would be good. That would be good. Okay. And.
David's got his hand up.
Hi, David.
Yeah, he's, he's just warming up for the evening.
Yeah.
You're muted, David.
Just a quick note for Tim on the posting of this meeting. The Zoom address was wrong on the event details on the website. It had periods instead of slashes. It was correct on the agenda, but wrong there. Just whoever's doing that, maybe.
Tim, you're muted.
We all want to get off this call.
Yeah. Okay, noted. Yeah, I'll take a look at that next time.
David, a stickler for details, you know.
Just thinking about the fact that you're going to want to be able to get more people to get on. And if you.
Yes.
Right.
Put a barrier in for people who haven't been doing this weekly, you know, one failure and they're done.
Yeah, no, very well-received comment. June 16th, master plan update. Are we really still going to have that, Bernie?
Well, you, you had asked for it. You had raised it, but, and so Jan is perfectly happy to come, but if you don't think that's necessary, it's really up to the board.
I don't want to make her do work, you know. I know that the, that the plan is sort of delayed. It's not, you know, moribund, but.
Right. She, you know, she made that presentation, I think, maybe at one of our very last in-person meetings. And I mean, I can sort of repeat, but you probably already know, Kate, you know, about where Civic Moxie is finishing up a few things, but the, the big part of what's left to do is a lot of the, is the getting the sort of last round of community input and, and discussion, which we can't do, you know, until the, there's a change in the number of people that can gather. So we're, we're thinking, yes, we still want to complete the contract by the end of the year, but we won't be doing the outreach, the next phase of outreach until, you know, till the end of the summer, early fall, including some kind of a townwide survey. So.
Well, I would say, why don't we tell her that we should put that off?
Yeah, if there's not significant progress to report, there's no reason for her to have to do it or for us to have to listen to it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know.
Dear Control, is that going to be ready, Bernie?
Yes, it is. The question is, more are we going to be ready?
All right, well, they're going to come, and it's going to be a joint meeting with Conscom and Land Stewardship. And, okay.
Tim, were you reaching out to Conscom and Land Stewardship or was Jonathan supposed to do that?
Jonathan was doing that, but I'll, I'll be in touch with Jonathan.
Okay.
Okay. And my question for the board then is, is how do we want to run this? Do we want to run this as a public input? Or are we just getting information from those committees and we're making our decision?
My preference would be to, we'll get a report from them on their recommendation and the justification for their recommendation, and we can then make a better decision.
Nathan? Yeah, okay, sorry. I didn't mean to.
We've had a lot of public input.
I, I kind of agree. So that's what, but I'm, I'm asking the board because I don't want to cut off public input, you know.
So I think, just to be clear, what this meeting is, is to, is getting the input from Conscom. However, I am always in favor of getting public input. That's why they're public meetings.
Well, yeah, okay, well.
And we'll still have the public input portion of the agenda.
Well.
You can't put it at the beginning, though, because then we can't reply to it, right?
Right.
Right.
I mean, I think that that's kind of a cop-out. Putting everything out up at the beginning is, is not fair to them.
That's why I'm asking, we will then be conducting a hearing. It's a hearing. It's not a public, you know, comment. It's not like the, the comment. That's going to be part, shapes part of the meeting.
It's not a regular board meeting. That portion of it is not a regular.
That portion of it, it's not, yeah.
It's totally fair to, if there's a lot of people there to say, okay, everybody's, you know, restricted to, you know, a three-minute comment and, you know, maybe one, you know, 30-second, you know, rebuttal type thing, right? You know, in order to, in order to limit it. I mean, that's what I did last year a lot of and to varying degrees of success.
Well, I'll ask somebody to be a timekeeper. And, you know, the nice thing about Zoom is you can just mute them after their three minutes. They can keep talking all they want. I wouldn't do that, but I mean, that, you know. I do think we should have a timekeeper, though.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I will ask for a volunteer.
I think we should allow for.
David's volunteering right now.
Yeah. And it can be sort of the same thing that Wayne does, too, you know, like if there isn't anybody presenting anything new, you know. You know.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, but I'm definitely always in favor of public input. I think it's important.
Yeah. Well, on the other hand, if they send us a letter, I don't want them to stand and read it to us either because that annoys me.
Yeah, they can, yeah, but, yeah, but, yeah, they don't need to read the whole thing, but just kind of make the point, you know.
Yes.
My letter stated, done, move on.
If we're putting, are we putting the packet on the web?
We always put the packet on the web.
And so everything that they have read, I mean, everything that they've sent us would need to have been in the packet. Or else, or else they, you know, you know.
Of course, if they send it to us, you know, two minutes before the meeting, then it's not in the packet.
Then they, then they should have 30, you know, or whatever it is, three minutes to summarize it.
Yeah, I'd go with a minute's comment myself, just if we have a lot of people.
Yeah. David, do you want to say something? You're muted again.
Accidentally, sorry. For what it's worth, I think it's highly likely that what you will get is a recommendation from both Conscom and the Land Stewards in favor of the hunt. And so, you know, just to help you have more. And so, you know, just to help you have more, you know, another week to think about it, that's, that's what you're going to get. I don't know how solid the justification's going to be, but that's what Land, Land Stewards voted unanimously tonight to say they're in favor of it. And I, you know, I think generally speaking, the view is the only good deer is a dead deer.
Well, we asked for specific justifications. And if they don't give it to us, then that's, all we can do is ask.
I understand, I'm just.
Yeah, we really need the justifications because.
Well, it's, because the understory, it's suffering.
Because that wasn't, that's not the argument. The argument, the argument was, we had specific questions we wanted answered.
That's fine, I, you know, I don't know, I don't, okay, I didn't see that, so. When you were talking about the packet being on the web, you just mean for yourselves.
I believe that's all public information as soon as it goes out, isn't that? Is that not true, Tim?
It's not on the website.
No, it's not on the website.
Just the agenda gets posted, right?
So we can't just, we can't just, well, you know, it's in the packet because we can't be handing them things like we, we are able to when we're, you know.
Yeah, Tim, you're muted, and so you were answering, and I didn't hear it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, the packet that you get is not on the web. And last thing, we got a lot of letters at the last instant. But all I was. In terms of what you're getting, whatever you get and when you get it from CONSCOM and Land Stewards, if you could post that.
With the agenda, maybe.
Or, or as soon as you can, just, you know, if there's, could be some on the Deer Committee site or something, the sooner that's out there, I think it's better for everybody because you have a more informed discussion when people know what you're talking about, and people feel very left out when they don't see that stuff in advance.
Okay, so, Tim, can you do that when that comes in? Great.
Sure, yep.
Thank you.
And, you know, I might also just, if you get the response from them, Tim, you know, with enough time, if, if it's just a general statement, it, I think it would be helpful if you could reply that the Board of Selectmen is looking for their specific reasons for the statement, you know, you know, why they're supporting the hunt.
It's tough for them to meet again between now and then, but.
No, but I'm, I'm hoping that, that the chair can sort of flesh out, if it's just a general statement, flesh out some of the details of the conversation.
I didn't mean to mislead, I don't know what, you know.
Yeah, I know Land Stewardship's meeting tonight and CONSCOM met last week, but I think they're going to meet again before next Tuesday.
Yes, it's, yeah, it's totally unhelpful for them to say we should keep doing it.
Yes, absolutely.
We had that last time, yeah.
Yeah. Are there any liaison reports? No.
Well, just quickly, I want to say that the Recycling Committee, you know, drew me in to, because they, they want to complete the, what are they calling it? It's through the, you know, the State's Department of Environmental Quality, whatever it's called, their, their whole recycling side. There's, you know, the possibility for applying for a grant that's larger than the $750 that they got last year. It's, I think it's something like $43, $4400. And so they are moving ahead to try to get the documentation needed to submit that grant, I believe it's by the end of June. So just wanted to let you know that that group is continuing to try to move along and get some money in the coffers to do some work next year.
Okay. All right, David, I'm going, what, I'm going to send you our open space report. What format do you want it in?
A Word doc, just a Word doc would be great.
Word doc, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. I have a motion for adjournment, I think.
So move.
Nathan just did it.
Nathan just made it.
All those in favor, please hit your leave button.
All right, good night, all. Thank you.